Ready?
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and regular meeting on Tuesday, August 4, 2009.
Tell for order. Tell for order. We have order, please.
At 4:25 PM, 5:40 PM, and 6 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A, Discussion Regarding the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2010.
As a courtesy matter, we would ask people to put their cellphones on vibrate, please. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Pro-Tim, City Commission, my name is Delina Barrera. I'm acting staff for the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. The Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee Board is appointed board. This is the board members, Ms. Fettis, Vice Chair, who is acting as the Chair, Robert Purfichal, Rosendo Escareño, Hugh Emerson, Rita Eckert, Peter Harris. Currently, we have a vacant physician because one of the members resigned due to relocation from out of the area. These are three physicians that are by virtue of physician, which is Ms. Connie Hensley, Hotel Motel Representative, Angela Burton, who's the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce President/CEO, and she's a business representative, and Tracy Wicket, which is a nonprofit representative who's the President/CEO of the United Way of Southern Cameron County. Again, for the sake of the new city commissioners, I am just going to briefly review what has already been presented to the City Commission. Again, on the City Commission Agenda on January 20th of '09, we did have a workshop to review the resolutions, articles, bylaws, orientation, mission goals, objectives, the COB budget and funding comparison to other cities. Again, what the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee was trying to do is use a best practices approach, the application process, and the funding packet. The City Commission did take action on the, and approved the articles and bylaws, and the funding packet and application process. On the April 7th City Commission meeting, we had another workshop for an update. We gave a chronological review of the CAC meetings since January from the various committees, including the CAC Board, the Marketing Promotions Committee, peer review panel committees. The other things that were discussed were the term limits, the presentation of CAC by entities that do promote and market the city, the meeting that was held with the City of Brownsville by CAC members, the key markets that have been identified here in the City of Brownsville, which include heritage tourism, sport tourism, and eco-tourism, and also as far as the funding application update, the application process, the applications that were received, and the peer review panel process, and finally, the hotel occupancy tax information that was provided from the city attorney. Again, as far as the major points, the key issues for this whole process is creating what has accountability, a fair process, transparency, ensuring return on investment, and organizational capacity. We did hold the peer review panel meetings on April 18th here in City Hall. There were two types of peer reviews. One was looking at the quality of program or the special projects, and then the administrative and fiscal responsibility. Fourteen of the fifteen applicants did attend these peer reviews. The peer reviewers then independently scored the applicants based on the criteria and the applications. Again, the peer review panel members for the quality aspect, we had 22 volunteers. They were a mixture of individuals, which is administrator for museums or nonprofits throughout the valleys, practitioners in the various areas, including visual arts, performing arts, historical preservation, restoration, and marketing, and also academicians and patrons. For the administrative and financial responsibility, that peer review panel consisted of the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. Again, as far as the general application, the quality of programs had 75 points max availability. The scores that were received by each of the different applicants ranged from 27.3 to 75. And then administrative effectiveness, we had 25 points max, and the range of scores was from 2 to 23.5. The special projects had a total of 100 points max. The range of scores were 90.2 to 97.5. The funding budget, what you will note here is that in fiscal year 2009, in hotel occupancy tax, there was almost 1.5 million. There was also an additional general revenue that was added, which is 639,130, for a subtotal of a little over 2 million available. And then for utilities, which comes out of the City of Brownsville's general revenue, 647,500 was allocated. For fiscal year 2010, which is this coming fiscal year, the projection for hotel occupancy tax is at 1.3 million. Again, we're looking at approximately 10% decrease, although we do want to note that the hotel is recommended possibly even going as far down as the 2005 figures, given the economic situation. For general revenue, again, as per City of Brownsville, given the economic situation that is being experienced nationwide, the committee was told to consider zero. So, that was 1.3 million that they had to consider. And then for utilities, again, they were instructed that, and the applicants were informed when we had the training for the actual applications, that the City of Brownsville at this point in time was considering that they would go ahead and continue to fund the utilities. The funding budget excluding utilities, a request totaled 3.5 million, and the available funds were, as previously discussed, 1.3 million. The funding basis, again, was the peer review panel scoring, the applications themselves, the organizational viability, reasonableness of funds to be able to perform the work of the request, and the ability to generate more hotel occupancy tax dollars. Again, the ability to generate more hotel occupancy tax dollars becomes quite critical because the more dollars, and that means in the future, more dollars for everyone to be able to distribute to organizations. Funding criteria, peer review scores, again, given that there was a funding shortage, only organizations with a total score of 70 or above were considered for funding. It was a baseline to at least begin because, as noted earlier, the request was almost three times as much as the actual funds available. Also, looking at the bringing of external dollars, return on investments, events generally were weighed more heavily than attractions, looking at the fact that attractions become part of a whole package for a destination, i.e. Brownsville, and then marketing and promotion. The funding process was a very in-depth application review, and it was a consensus-building process. It was a very, very time-consuming process, many, many hours, lots of discussion and debate took place as they went through this process, detailed reviews of the applications. The Brownsville Committee Health Center, again, as per city manager, since they were receiving city funds, although only utilities, the city manager did request that they submit an application, of which they did. On the peer review score, they got 23.5 out of 25. They were present for the peer review. Again, this was the only administrative area, since it was utilities only. It was a very commendable application, thorough application, sustainable organization. There was a discussion as far as discrepancy between prior and future, and they noted that it was because they do have a non-city-owned building under construction at this point in time. The request was for 200,000. The recommendation, again, was, as was in the application, it noted that city-owned, only city-owned facilities would be provided utilities, and thus, the recommendation for The Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, the score, they received 27.3 out of 75, and administrative, 2 out of 25 points. They did not attend the peer review session. Some of the comments, "Application show insufficient information to demonstrate what the organization has done or plans to do." Application incomplete, no strategic plan, no goals and objectives, need to find other avenues of marketing, such as e-marketing, tracking marketing. There are no facilities for major conventions, is it an information center? Again, the type is marketing and promotion. The request was 1.1. The recommendation was zero. On the Brownsville Historical Association, the quality, they got 72.6 out of 75 points, administrative was 23.5 out of 25. Peer review session, they were present for the peer review session. The comments included, "All questions answered, excellent information, exceptional application, good application, high-quality application, exemplary application, to be used as example, numerous and diverse programming for tourists." The request was for 250,000. The recommendation was for 165. The Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, the quality, they had 73.6 out of 75, administrative 18 out of 25. Peer review session present, peer review comments, "Application shows strong strategy for evaluation and growth, it's a complete package." Application was hard to follow with the information provided. It showed a budget surplus. There was excessive debt. It appears to be financially unstable, not enough income, too much, too many expenditures, local education geared programming. The request was for 150. The recommendation was for zero. Brownsville Tennis Association, 63.6 out of 75, 23 out of 25. They were present for the peer review session. Peer review comments, "They partner with COB to promote BTA through City Channel. They've had good fundraising efforts, a good program, excellent return on investment, excellent accountability and criteria response, and that they host events." The request was for 35,000. The committee recommended 35,000. The Brownsville Society for Performing Arts, they had 56.6 out of 75, administrative was 22.1 out of 25. They were present for the peer review session. Peer review comments included lack of strategic plan, but overall, application was strong. Popular but not cultural event, weak marketing getting worded out, did not respond directly to criteria.
Thanks.
Generally, a good application, continued efforts to promote and grow festivals, consistent financial reporting, TCA and NEA grants a plus. They requested 70, and the recommendation was for 70. The Camille Players, the peer review score, quality 46 out of 75, administrative 21.1 out of 25. They were present for the peer review session. The peer review comments included high artistic merit, lacks... Continue efforts to promote...
Rewind.
There we go. Need stronger strategic plan, financially performing within budget. The request was for 1,0249. The recommendation was for zero.
Why was that?
Pardon me?
How do you come up with a zero? Because of what?
That was a recommendation based on peer review comments. And again, if you look, I believe, at this total score, which is 67.1, this application wasn't considered because they had the baseline of 70 for considering applications. So, given that it fell below the 70-point criteria, then they weren't considered. Children's Museum of Brownsville, 71 out of 75. The administrative was 23.3 out of 25. Peer review comments, again, good application, great sustained growth, good partnerships. The request was for 48,000. The recommendation was 48,000. The Commemorative Air Force, they got 67.1 points out of 75 points. The administrative was 23.1 out of 25 points. They were present for the peer review session. Accounting is complete and outstanding, great accounting, exceptional coordination, excellent work with limited resources. The request was for 25,000. The recommendation was for 25,000. Costumes of the America, 69 out of 75 points, administrative 23.1 out of 25 points. They were present for the peer review session. Comments included thorough and easy-to-read application, well-organized application, exceptional work for all volunteer organization, clear on mission, focused on goal accomplishment. Request was for 21,250, and the recommendation was for 21,250.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Commissioner, that one got a 69. It didn't get a 70. Why did he get funding?
It's 69 plus 23.1, which gives them 92.1.
Okay. Don't bring me wrong.
Gladys Porter Zoo, 74 out of 75 points, administrative 22.6 out of 25. Good application, good grasp of tourism data, needs to find more specific marketing plan, budget reflects surplus, premier tourist attraction. Request was for 600,000. Recommendation was for 300,000. Gorgas Science Foundation, quality 68 out of 75, administrative was 19.5 out of 25. They were present for the peer review process. Comments is that it didn't define expenditures of funds requested, the budget reflects a surplus, concern over that the CEO is a board chair, and there was also a question of where the work would be done, whether it would bring tourism to Brownsville. Request was for 60,000. The recommendation was for zero. Historic Brownsville Museum, 45.6 out of 75 points, administrative was 14.9 out of 25 points. They were present for the peer review session. The application was incomplete. There was no strategic plan, concern of where the rental income or cost for programs. There was no attendance, none of relaxed financial understanding. The information received did lack, had large annual surpluses. Thus, there was a question, need for funds. The application lacked both quantitative qualitative data, and the exhibits don't differ from local art galleries. Request was for 115,875. The recommendation was for zero. UTB TSC Guitar Festival, they had 59.8 out of 75, 17.4 out of 25. They were present for the peer review session. Concerns included, or comments included, poor budget, 100% request. Want to know how the deficit had been funded in the past. No numbers to justify previous success. If this was a duplicate request, how do you track effectiveness? And whether, a question of whether it was responsibility of UTB TSC. The request was for 25,000. The recommendation was for zero. Again, just summarizing the recommendation, you'll note the requests, again, VCHC only had a utility request, and this just summarizes a different amount that we have just gone through of the different organizations. Again, the arts, as we look at the arts that were recommended, as far as 15%, 195,000 max, you have Brownsville Society Performing Arts for 70, the Children's Museum for 48, the Costumes of the Americas at 21.250, so it brings you a total of 139,250, which is under the 15% max. For the historic, recommended a 15%, which is 195,000. You look at BHA, the request, the funding recommended was 165,000. For the Commemorative Air Force, the amount was 25,000. This brings you for 190,000, which is below the 195,000 max.
Delina, Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner. I have a question. Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yes.
With the Brownsville Historic Association, have they always had those entities under them? How many years have they been performing all those functions?
Some of these, as, and again, I'm going for recollection. I'm not sure if somebody's here from BHA, but, for example, the Old City Cemetery, the Old City Cemetery Center and Center Restoration just came online within the last two years. At the last item, Southmost Heritage Center is under development. The Arts and Cultural Center is, which is an artist studio, which, the individual formerly at Neal House, they are just coming online this year, along with the Market Square. Research Center is also, has come online this year. And the Preservation Resource Center has expanded to also include the library. The Heritage Museum, the Stillman House, has been a part of that organization.
Okay. How many employees do they have, total?
I would have to either look that up. I'm not sure if there's anybody here, but I would have to look that up.
Well, what I did was compared the numbers from previous years, and this organization last year received $36,125 in hot funds, hotel motel funds, and now they're receiving 165,000. That's a big, big jump when you have other organizations that are receiving zero funds.
Again, you will note that if you look at the funds that were under the general fund, I believe the amount exceeds that amount, if you also couple in the amount of general fund money. And that's where the major change is, is that in this, or at least for the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee, there, those funds were not even available for them to consider into the total packet.
Right. But I'm only talking about hotel motel funds, which is 36,125, like I said, and this is only hotel motel funds of 165,000 dollars.
The other thing, Delina, that these funds, they have to be used strictly for advertising. They can't be used for any operations or anything like that if it's hotel motel funds.
Right, right. They're strictly for promotion.
So, why would you want to increase it from 36,000 to 165,000 for advertising? It shouldn't be for operations. If it's hotel motel funds.
I don't know if the attorney, I mean, it's a legal question you're asking me, so I don't know if the attorney would like to address that.
And, you know, I got here a little late. I want to thank you, Delina, and everybody else involved for what you, the task you undertake.
The only legal requirement is that these monies not exceed 15% for the arts and for historic reservation and preservation. Now, there are also other requirements in terms of specific categories that it has to fall into. The specific categories that she's talking about here, in terms of specific allocations, do not exceed the 15% cap. I didn't go into what they're specifically using the money for, but assuming that they're using the money for the permissible purposes under the statute, those monies do not exceed the 15% cap. Now, there is a $200,000 allocation under special projects for advancing heritage and eco-tourism, and I don't think Dr. Brewer has gotten to that.
No, not yet.
That's something new.
Correct.
No, not exactly. That was a function that the CDB would do.
Right, right. I agree, but I mean, this is not what we've been doing in the past. But my question, again, to you attorneys, is this, by statute, I think the hotel motel tax is supposed to be used for the promotion of the entertainment tourism industry to put heads in bed, by statute.
That's correct. Section 351 of the Tax Code, let me read you the very beginning of it, it says, "Revenue from the municipal hotel occupancy tax may be used only to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry, and that use is limited to the following." So, when we start talking about the arts, we start talking about historic preservation and restoration, we actually have two requirements. Number one, we have, you have, it must fit within the arts, but it must also promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry by bringing in people into the area. So, there's actually a two-pronged requirement that's required by the statute.
But I think it's got to be used solely for the promotion, the marketing, not for the operations.
And not operational.
Well, it talks about, actually, like, if you look at number five, it says, "Historic reservation and preservation for projects or activities." "Or advertising and conducting solicitation and promotional programs to encourage tourists and convention." So, there are, there is some latitude there, provided ultimately, you're bringing people into the area, because the idea behind the monies is to bring people in to fill hotel rooms.
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Commissioner.
Mark, I don't, in the past, it's, I don't think I've ever heard it's been that way in terms, you know, the mayor's question of the money should be used solely for advertising, a promotion of the city. And so, I guess you need to make it very clear that that's not what we're talking about. It shouldn't be solely just for promotion or advertising.
That is not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that the statute basically presumes that certain activities will bring in, and that's why you have the reason for the caps. In other words, it talks about the furnishing of facilities, personnel, and materials for registration of convention delegates. It talks about the encouragement, promotion, involvement, or application of the arts, including instrumental and vocal music, dance, drama, etc. So, clearly, you don't have to specifically run ads with the money, okay? However, when we're talking about promotion programs for historical activities, historical reservation, all right, under number five of the statute, that would be included in that cap.
I understand that, but I don't want to use a loophole to where you're tapping those funds, not for promotion, but for operations. That's, I don't want that loophole being used for something that has not been used in the past. That's what I'm saying.
You do not have to use the money specifically to buy advertisements, if that's what your question is, Mr. Mayor. That is not required by the statute. But you do have 15% caps for the arts. You do have a 15% cap for historic restoration and preservation projects, and that 15% cap for the historic preservation projects includes money spent on promotional programs for that purpose. That 15% cap, that limitation does not, is not included under Section 4, which deals with the arts.
I appreciate your opinion. This member of this body does not agree that we should allow funds to be used for anything other than marketing, promoting our city, or the entities that bring tourism or events to this city to put heads in bed. Okay. Commissioner, someone wanted to say something.
Yeah, so, how are CDB salaries paid then? They're paid with hotel motel funds.
But they're charged with a, as an entity.
Right.
To promote and market the city, so, of course, you have to have overhead doing that. That's why they're doing it. But they're not using it for the operations of the zoo, or the museum, or the cemetery. They're not using it for mains or anything like that. They're using it for strictly the marketing and the promoting of the city, and of course, they have to incur overhead to get that done. They have to hire a professional that can get that done.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, if I can comment, let me read this section in terms of the arts, all right? It talks about the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and application of the arts, including instrumental and vocal music, dance, drama, folk art, creative writing, architecture, design, allied fields, painting, sculpture, photography, graphic, and craft arts, motion pictures, radio, television, tape, and sound recording, and other arts related to the presentation, performance, execution, and exhibition of these major art forms. Nowhere in that section does it say you have to specifically buy advertisements with that.
See, where I get hung up is when you first started reading it, the encouragement or the use, not the operations, see?
I think, with due respect, Mayor, I think you're reading it a little narrow. I think the purpose of these categories is to presume that funding certain types of these categories, to a certain extent, will promote the hotel industry, and that's the reason for the caps. That's the reason for the 15% caps on funding for the arts and funding for historic reservation and preservation. That's the whole reason that they have those caps, so there's some latitude in spending those monies.
Okay. Everybody satisfied with his explanation? Okay, let's move on. We don't have to agree, Mark, but thank you.
And then for the advertising and promotion, Gladys Porter Zoo, 300,000, and also then Brownsville Tennis Association for 35,000, which brings it to 335,000. So, when you take into account also the utilities, you're now looking at the total amount that is being provided to each of the different organizations. For the special projects application, there was advancing heritage and eco-tourism. Peer review was 91 out of 100. Peer review session, they were present. Peer review comments included heads in beds, impressive measurement plan and project plan, great proposal, downtown revitalization-type projects. The request was for 380,000. The request was for three hundred and eighty thousand, the recommendation was for two hundred thousand. The Arts and Cultural Center, ninety-five out of a hundred, place of interest, location of interaction between tourists and locals, good application, dynamic project with working artists, request was for five thousand, recommendation was zero.
Excuse me, Delina, Commissioner Somor wants to be recognized.
Back to your slide regarding heritage tourism and ecotourism, what entity is going to be tasked with that function?
The entity that applied for this particular project was the Brownsville Historical Association.
So in addition to the one hundred and sixty-five thousand that has been recommended to them, they will be acquiring an additional two hundred thousand for this role?
For this particular role, specifically for this.
That's okay, Commissioner.
Pardon me, what is ecotourism specifically?
Uh, that would be the promotion of such things as, let's say, the birding center, the, those type, birding activities, activities that involve, where you are looking at the ecological aspect. Brownsville, again, is well-known for birding, I know that was one of the areas that was discussed as far as promoting that particular activity.
And are any of those, do any of those qualify for other funding sources like 4B for quality of life and such?
It would depend on the application itself, so, and that's true for...
Perhaps a better question would be, do any of them that you're discussing today receive funds from 4B?
Almost every single organization, I think, except the historic Brownsville Museum, all of them have, and the Brownsville, the Brownsville Community Health Clinic, the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the historic Brownsville Museum, those are the only three that have not applied. I believe every, all the other entities have applied and received funding through 4B.
Generally, there's generally one entity, an umbrella entity, tourism entity, that oversees heritage tourism and ecotourism. Those are general promotional items of a city, branding a city. Who is, is there anyone on staff who has that expertise to do that?
I also want to ask that question, what expertise do they have to do, to undertake this? And we have Resaca de Palma, which is a two-thousand-acre ecological park there. We have the zoo, they just came up with this beautiful, and they're working on it right now, the eco butterfly sanctuary area, yeah. And then we have the botanical garden up at Southmost. Why are we getting into new projects when funding is limited, and what expertise do they have to do this?
Again, I can only tell you what was in the application.
But you approved an application without knowing what expertise they, I'm, I'm, please, don't take this personal. The, the committee is taking, is approving an application without being able to answer the question, is what expertise they have to take on this kind of mission?
Again, they had created a partnership with the various entities, including Resaca de Palma, Sable Palms, if you're talking about the ecotourism, the Gorgas, Science Foundation, and again, I may not be recalling all the organizations, to create and develop this particular market.
What plan did they submit for that? Can you show us a plan that did that?
I could get the application, yes, from my office.
The application or plan to, to do precisely what they're doing.
Yes, and in the application, it has the plan in order to develop this, this particular, well, actually, the two markets, both the heritage market and the ecotourism market.
Well, there's also a legal question, because only fifteen percent can go to historic preservation, and this is a historic association, so with this additional two hundred thousand, you're going to exceed your fifteen percent, so I think that's something that we need to clear up.
Commissioners, let me, let me answer that question for you. Under three fifty-one, one oh one five, okay, under historic reservation, preservation projects, that includes advertising and conducting solicitations, promotional programs to encourage tourists and convention delegates to visit preserved historic sites or museums. So if the two hundred thousand deals with promotion of economic tourism and things like that, that wouldn't violate your two hundred thousand dollars caps, all right? However, if that two hundred thousand dollars was used specifically to advertise and promote historic sites and museums, then you'd have to add that to that hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which could potentially exceed the one ninety, the one ninety-five cap. The two hundred thousand dollars that they're using, okay, it's been represented to me that that is for ecotourism and for other things, the, the commission would need adequate assurances that that money was not being spent on promotional programs to encourage tourists to visit historic sites and museums, because that would fall within the fifteen percent cap.
So what entity is going to provide that oversight to make sure those monies are spent as they're applied for?
I mean, that, that's a question for the commission.
As it currently stands, as a part of the resolution that the city commission passed, they were giving that oversight to the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee.
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Commissioner Somor wants to be recognized.
Delina, I guess, you know, for me, after reviewing, you know, what's been allocated, or what's being, you know, what's been requested, and what's, the recommendations have been made, you have three, three organizations that have been funded in the past, that, based on this information tonight, would not be funded.
Four.
Four, excuse me. So, that's a problem, you know, because this year, I think, the whole process was, it's new. It was new to every single organization, this year should be that transition year, where we shouldn't leave anyone out, because we just shouldn't. Not because people, some people or some organizations may have thought, or didn't think, that, you know, they should do the following, or, you know, take it too seriously, I don't think that was the case. You know, I really think that there, there were some errors that are made, and they were clearly outlined on the presentation. But no one should be excluded, and one organization's gain and another's loss, that's, that's hard to see, you know, and it's hard to really comprehend and understand, say, you know what, that's the way it should be, you know, considering the times that we live in right now. And so for me, I think that, you know, there's obviously, the committee's done great work in terms of what it's brought forth, obviously, there's been things that we could have never considered, or had really thought about, were going on, and though they've been, you know, it's been brought out, with that, I think, you know, there's, there's a new charge down the road, to say, now we know, and so therefore, you know, we want to monitor, and we want to make sure people are held accountable, and, and the organizations do what they're supposed to do, and that the funds aren't being applied appropriately. But to say, you're going to receive this, and those that did well, they should be, they should be rewarded, but we shouldn't say, those that, for whatever reason, didn't, don't receive anything. And that's, and that's really my position. And for example, you know, one of my questions was, when you, when you, one of the sides that talked about the quality of the program, well, who determined the quality? Who determined what the matrix would be? Was that the, was that the committee itself? Was that something of an outline that we took from a City of San Antonio, or from another municipality, to determine what, what should that really be? What should that matrix be like for the committee members to begin to do this work? But that's where I stand, Delina, again, I don't want to take away from any, what, what the work that people spend countless hours doing, and I thank them, and I think the commission thanks them, but to say these few organizations aren't going to receive any funding, that's really difficult to swallow.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Gowen, she's being recognized.
I think it's wonderful that you spent so much time trying to design a system of accountability. I think, especially these days, we do need to be transparent. I, I do think it's the first time that you've done it, as Commissioner Camarillo just pointed out, and in these times of, of difficult economics, I have a hard time funding certain entities completely, and others at zero. I think we all share in the responsibility of a, of a lower economy. I also have a hard time limiting these entities to just hotel tax, as opposed to the fact that they are a very big quality of life issue. And how much preparation did they each have in being able to prepare the application? Did you meet with each of them? Did you meet repetitively? Did they, did, were they able to turn in addendums, additions, especially because it was the first go-round of this process? I just, I just feel like, to give zero, as Commissioner Camarillo said, a small business, as a small business owner, I would not survive the absence from one day to the next of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for example. It would shut that, it would shut my business.
Delina, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I guess.
Delina, I've talked to you a lot about this Cultural Affairs Committee, I think it's a great committee, the people in that committee are very strong intellectual individuals, and they, they're trying to do what's right for the city, and holding these entities accountable, and I'm all for that. But I have to agree with, and I was talking to Commissioner Camarillo and Charlie Kavler before this, is, they did their job, and now we gotta do our job. And our job is, as a whole, to make sure all these, like, for, for instance, the Camille Playhouse, that's a, I mean, to give them zero, to me, that was just unacceptable. I mean, that, just the fact, someone would say, okay, but this, Camille Playhouse has been in Brownsville before I was born, probably, they should be held accountable, but I think this first year, hey, look, this is what we require of you this year, you didn't meet it this year, but you know what, it's a learning process, next year, strap, strap, strap on, because we're going to hold you more accountable. I think the true sense of this Cultural Affairs is right, and we backed up, you know, Commissioner Taranji when he brought this to the table, because we know it's needed, we need this, it's something that we need to, to strain out everything that's going on. But at the same point, some of these zeros are just, you know, you're not, you're not, we gotta show compassion, I think, I was recommending to Charlie Kavler, let the city staff go back and look at some of these things, along with maybe a workshop with the city commissioners and the mayor, to say, look, you know, what, what is, let's, let's, let's jump on what the Cultural Affairs did, because at the end of the day, it is our decisions, and we gotta be, you know, I wish I had some of these applications, so I could go through them too. You know, I mean, if you're going to recommend something to me, and I appreciate you doing all the work you did, but at the end of the day, I'm held accountable, to make sure we hold accountability to all these entities, does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Taranji, want to say something?
Sure, ma'am. Delina, thank you, and I appreciate everything that you and everyone else has done. I don't speak loud enough. Just want to say thank you for all your hard work, I know that we've sat down and we've discussed this. I think that what this has done is shown us as a community where we spend our money, and it's very evident that we are supporting the arts at a very high level in this community. And I think that for the community of our size, we have the greatest amount of economic input of any other community in the state of Texas. The fact that we are putting six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars into utilities and overhead is, is a big chunk of our budget. And when we look at this, I don't necessarily agree with all of the recommendations that the Cultural Affairs Committee came out with, but I understand the idea of trying to reward excellence, and I understand that we want to make sure that we have viable entities, and we also have to look at what our decisions, and how our decisions are going to impact Brownsville, and where we want to be, and what, what types of entities do we want to promote over the next five years? Because these decisions are going, especially in these tough economic times, are going to directly impact certain structures. And if you look at the Heritage Museum, obviously, it's flourishing. If you look at some of the other museums, they're not doing as well. And we need to either see if they can be assisted in that process, or if they're going to be viable. Now, I know that we, as a community, have put a big investment in the Museum of Fine Arts, and we continue to do so, because we are economically tied to that entity. And we also, with the Farmer's Market, I've talked to Mr. Horn, they've seen an increase in participation, and I know that they've tried to do some things to make themselves more viable. I'd like to explore those options, and I don't know what everybody else is going to want to do, but I do think that we need to look at this issue, and make sure that we take the right steps in allocation. I know that an organization that before received very little money is now receiving the lion's share of all the funds, and I think we should address that, and see if that's what, the way we want to go, or if we want to distribute it a little bit more evenly, and if there are some organizations that will be left out based on failure to participate. Because everyone, from what I remember, in all of the meetings that we had as a city commission, it was told, and it would made very explicit, that this was the process, staff was available, and that people were going to be available to show how to fill out the forms, and some of these organizations that were completely volunteer organizations, like the Costume of Americas, they did a very good job. Most of the packets that you showed me, because I know that you showed me each of these applications, three, four inches thick, okay? And this is from a volunteer organization, that, that's commendable, and, and it shows the, the strength behind these organizations. The Camille, I mean, it is a, an excellent organization, and it has a lot of community support, and I think that it may not bring people from around the world to see it, but it sure does pack the house when they have their programs in the summer. And those are things that, you know, sometimes, as a community, we have to decide, is that something that we want to keep and continue to sustain, even though it might not be economically viable? And I just, again, thank you all for your support and, and your time and consideration, and I, I think this is something that we're going to have to address and look at, especially considering the mayor and Commissioners Somor's concern, concerned about rolling the Visitors and Convention Bureau into the city. That brings up a whole new hornet's nest. So, thank you.
Would you like me?
Commissioner Somor wanted to say something?
Well, I think there's one item that we're not really, that this isn't conveying, and that is that we need some funds to promote our hotels as well. These are hotel motel monies, and we do need to have an entity to promote that, to continue to bring those monies in, otherwise, we're going to have problems in the future, providing funding to these various entities.
We already have a problem.
May I continue?
Commissioner, I mean, Commissioners, on a final note, Delina, first of all, I want to thank you personally for the hard work, along with everybody that, that put this time, I mean, a lot of time and effort was put by the committee, but also by the entities. But I want to remind everybody that I was the only one that voted against this, because I didn't think it could work, and I thought that this was not the best way to make it better. I think we should try to make it better, not to, and, and decide who are we going to cut out, or who we're going to increase, I think we have to improve on what we have. And I think if our focus were to be put on how we can be more efficient, use our dollars wisely, and unite all these entities, along with the hotel and the tourist bureau, to promote our city, I think everybody will benefit by it. The zoo's receipts will be higher, the museum, and of course, we all know that these are quality of life entities, they're not money makers, they're there, they serve a purpose as a, for a healthy community, okay? And, and also for the world to come and see us, I mean, this is our best face that we're going to, we're going to put on display. And if we don't fund these, these entities, whether we agree with them or not, I'm not into the micromanagement of them, we'll be a dying community, that's what, that's what we'll be, because we have nothing to offer. Based on that, I want to thank everybody for, for taking the time to, to get us here, it's important that we recognize, perhaps, we need to look for a different approach. Strategic planning is about bringing together the entities and seeing, and asking them, okay, what would you like to see happen? And I don't think we really did that in a positive sense, in a constructive sense, to make them more efficient, or to promote a little better, or to unite us a, a little more. So I, I think that we can, we can, we should allow the city manager, as in the past, with the finance department, to propose the budget, and during the budget process, take these issues up. I don't think we should cut anybody, I think we should fund them at the same level we did last year, so they can plan their year as they, and meet their commitments as they have in the past. I know, living through difficult times right now, but those, that's, that's what our reserves are for. We have reserves to carry us through this difficult time. Hopefully, next year will be a better year, to, we'll have more hotel revenues, to where we won't have to worry as much about the funding, but I think to cut them would be the wrong way to go. Last, when I first came in, I, I proposed a, a three-dollar fee for the arts, and the, and the public safety, and the animal shelter. I'm willing to, to give it all to the arts, if that's, that's what it would be. Had we adopted that, we would be making it better. We're losing about two million dollars a year on three dollars. This would be a moot issue right now, to where everybody would have the funding they need, and we would be supporting it. And we're going, we're going backwards instead of forwards. In my calculation, it's, it's about a million nine hundred forty-four thousand annual funding that could be distributed amongst the arts, that's the way the commission would want it to do. That's the way the commission would want it to do, just the arts. I proposed three entities. But that's $4 million that we lost in two years, that I think, uh, uh, that, that would, uh, alleviate the strain that is putting on, on everybody right now, and, and the concerns of what the future's gonna be for the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, or the zoo, who really hasn't done any real capital improvements in the past 20 years, to speak of, to bring new exhibits, which we should bring new exhibits, or expand and stuff like that. I think that's what we need to plan on. So, based on that, uh, I hope this commission will rethink its position, and thank you for your service, and everybody else, and let management, uh, take care of this, along with the finance department, and go through the budget process as we did every year, and maintain the funding as we did last year, and if we have to, uh, tap into the reserves, and in the meantime, look for an alternative. If it's not the three dollars, look for some other way that we can make it better, not take funding away. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this is just a discussion.
May I go ahead and complete the presentation?
Would you all like to hear it, or you want to continue to?
Please, continue.
Um, on the Arts and Culture Center, again, 95 out of 100 peer review session present, place of interest, location of interaction between tourists and locals, good application, dynamic project with working artists, again, request was 5,000, recommendation was zero. And this is, uh, an example of one where, although good scores, good comments, inadequate funding, all the way around. Uh, the peer review, this is, uh, marketing and promotion, 97.5 out of 100. Uh, it was organizational specific, it can, there were concerns with the organizational viability, and it was duplicative of, of other marketing and promotion efforts. The request was 150, recommendation was zero. 94.8 out of 100, uh, the, they were present for the peer review session. This was a local education-based initiative. It was a multi-year project that was already receiving funding, and there was no heads and beds. The request for 120, the recommendation was for zero. This, the USTA Men's Pro Circuit Futures Tennis Tournament, 95 out of 100, uh, they were present for the peer review session, there was strong organizational capacity. International marketing and recognition, heads and beds, the request was for 12.2, the recommendation was for 12.2. Uh, sport tourism, 96.8 out of 100, um, they were present, the heads and beds, they focused on marketing recruiting tournaments to Brownsville, a concern expressed whether it was already city-funded. Uh, the request was for 131, recommendation was for zero. The conference mark-
Go back to the last one? On the sports tourism, we just have a brand-new sports park. Why wouldn't we want, and you know, as well as I do, that we're in a, in a area where we need to build like a sports authority, to bring people down here, uh, leagues and organizations that come down and enjoy the sports park, tournaments and stuff like that. Why would you fund zero?
This was, at the end, you'll see where they put it, put it in this other category. Again, there was concerns about the fact of the city fund, whether this was already city-funded.
Well, you're a city employee, you know that. What's the answer?
I'm sorry?
You know the answer to this. You're a city employee. Do we have, see, as a director of the BCIC, part of your job was to bring in sponsorships, bring in corporate sponsors. We ha- we haven't done that. We haven't done that, so we needed, uh, sports tourism, we needed funding to create a sports authority, so we could go and market and bring in world-class. I, I, I don't see how you weren't, uh, maybe put your two cents in to maybe fund some of this. I, I, I don't see why it was zero.
Again, it's funded in the, in the latter part of this presentation, there is a grouping where sport tourism is funded.
The whole thing, the whole amount?
Well, there was, there is a large amount that's, it's the set aside funds, and it includes doing the sport tourism.
You're talking about the 350,000?
Yes, sir.
Which, we're gonna have, that's the, what we're getting into with the conventions and visitors bureau, who normally get 800,000, now there's 350,000, and we're gonna have to take from there. What about the convention center? What we're gonna, what, wasn't this cultural affairs committee supposed to set aside something so we can generate revenues to build a convention center?
That was a consideration, however, as noted at the beginning of the presentation, whereas last year, uh, there was approximately 2 million to be distributed among these organizations, that now, amount got reduced to 1.3 million, and so, that was a very large decrease, and so they had a very limited amount of funding that they would be able to distribute.
Okay.
The Air Fiesta, peer review scoring, 95.3 out of 100 points. Peer review session present, peer review comments, financial sustainable organization, puts heads in beds, funding type, it's an event, the request was for 25,000, recommendation was for 25,000. Special project application, destination Mid-Cultural District, 96 out of 100 points, they were present for the peer review session. In this particular case, it coordinates entities from the Mid-Cultural District area for comprehensive marketing. The request was for 12.5, and the recommendation was for 12.5. Rio Grande Delta Archaeological, Archaeology Fair, excuse me, peer review session was 92 out of 100, they were present for the peer review session. Peer re- review comments with that this event is actually hosted by the National Park Service at Palo Alto. The request was for 3,050, recommendation was for zero. Uh, again, when you look at this particular area, it summarizes, uh, the entities that were funded. And so, again, all of these areas, you're looking at advertising and promotion. Uh, the advancing heritage and ecotourism was to develop comprehensive heritage and ecotourism industry, graphic and content design and development, marketing campaign and materials, and, and marketing personnel. The USTA Men's Pro Circuit Futures Tennis Tournament, again, it's for supplies and materials, marketing and promotion, and for personnel. For Air Fiesta, the funds were for the production and exhibit costs, and for the Mid-Cultural District, it was for supplies and materials, production, exhibit costs, marketing and promotion, coordination.
How much more do you have to go in your presentation?
Just a few more slides, sir. The, um, purpose restricted funds, again, this is for advertising and promotion, the recommended amount was 350. Uh, no application were, except for the, uh, sports tourism, no application addressed the following issues. The lay us on to the hotel industry, so this addresses a concern, uh, that you were discussing, Commissioner Samora. Uh, lay us on to the hotel industry to work with sales staffs and promote key tourist travel markets, uh, to coordinate the key tourist travel markets, develop a comprehensive City of Brownsville tourism campaign inclusive of all attractions, to develop Brownsville as a travel destination, create a promotional, uh, packet inclusive of all attractions, hotels, restaurants, and retail to distribute it for all upcoming events, tour operators, potential meetings and conferences to be held in Brownsville or the surrounding area, promote sport tourism by working with both cities and schools, advertise in all key magazines, websites, tourist documents to promote Brownsville, including cooperative advertising and e-commerce, to operate a Brownsville walk-in and internet information center seven days a week with an active volunteer team, and finally, to promote a tourist-friendly community. And then there was a 36,050 that they, uh, recommended to be allowed for commission. Um, and this, again, uh, was just the timeline as far as the, what the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee went through, uh, to be able to develop, uh, this whole process. Again, um, depending on the city commission approval, uh, the city commission would take action on contract, and awardees would sign contract, and there would be a contract, uh, process. The other item that they looked at is, uh, the contract itself. Currently, there's minimal reporting and monitoring of funds and activities, which was one of the concerns that the city commission had expressed, and was, uh, one of the reasons why this, this whole, the process was developed and this committee was created. Again, the current contracts do not define activities. The contracts, uh, were reviewed from other cities, uh, the recommended contract is actually modeled after the City of Dallas. Uh, the contract recommendation was reviewed by the city attorney. The criteria, uh, that they were looking at is accountability of city funds, a performance-based contract, where they're looking at outcomes. And finally, again, these were the closing comments that the board, uh, wanted to make for this particular presentation, that there's been over 400 cumulative hours donated by the members of the city commission-appointed board. Understand the challenge posed by the city commission, the members of the board approached this appointment with a positive attitude to effectively ensure a fair, transparent process for the accountability of public funds for the betterment of Brownsville. This became a more difficult task, as, uh, they were faced with reduced fund availability. The CAC Board would like to express appreciation for the position that the city, the Brownsville City Commission has taken, to ensure that public funds are distributed based on merit, and that those receiving funds would be held accountable.
Thank you, Dr. Varela. In all fairness, I think we need to hear out of the public a little bit. I know we're running behind your supposed patience. I'm gonna call you up there, so if you make any remarks briefly, I appreciate it, so we can continue the meeting. Jim McNeil, Patrick Birchfield, Barry Horn, uh, Stephen Scholl, Edward Moore, and, uh, Mr. Wadwani, uh, those are the, uh, those are the, uh, names I have listed here that want to speak on this issue. Can you start? Mr. McNeil? You asked to speak?
Yes.
Please. I know it was a long evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm here to ask for a positive vote for the tennis center, both for the 35, for which is our basic operational funds, and for the 12.2, which is for the men's professional tennis tournament, for which the City of Brownsville would then become the title sponsor, and every bit of advertising would say, the City of Brownsville Open, the City of Brownsville Classic, the City of Brownsville Men's Pro Tournament, whatever we decide to know and name it, but the City of Brownsville would be the title sponsor. We are a volunteer organization, and over the years, we've done a lot of promotion, not only here in the valley, but statewide, and our tournaments, which we've done nine so far, eight women's, uh, excuse me, eight men's, which I've counted as many as 38 countries represented, and the women's tournament brought in over 20 countries. So, we're known worldwide for that event. We also do a lot of promotion here in the valley and the state. Uh, also, we're currently trying to develop a program with the elementary schools with the cooperation of the United States Tennis Association, for a program that's called Quick Start, where you cordon off a basketball court and make little mini tennis courts, and they hit with Nerf balls. So, we're trying to start that program with the conjunction of the USTA here in the elementary schools. So, we are all volunteers, we by our own nature, we promote Brownsville worldwide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Patrick Birchfield? Mr. Birchfield? Dr. Birchfield?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners and citizens of Brownsville. I am Dr. Patrick Birchfield, Director of Gladys Porter Zoo. Today, I would like to take a few moments to comment on the allocation of hotel motel tax dollars and the electricity, water, and sewage provided to the zoo by the city. The zoo is a valu- is valuable to the City of Brownsville. This is because of the people it draws here, and because of the conservation, education, and ecotourism it brings to the community. It provides local recreation and adds to the quality of life here. The zoo is owned by the City of Brownsville, like seven other city-owned zoos across Texas, it receives its utilities free of charge. The only exception to this is the Texas Zoo in Victoria, and they pay for sewer and water, and our zoo pays for its garbage service. Utilities aside, like the seven other city-owned zoos across Texas, a portion of our operating income comes from tax support. This is how we measure up to the other city-owned zoos in Texas. The Dallas Zoo and the Ellen Trout Zoo in Lufkin are 100% funded by their cities. Abilene and El Paso are between 60 to 65% funded by tax dollars. Waco is right at 41%. Houston is at 33%. Even the Victoria Zoo is funded at 23%. And currently, with the recent increase, which we got last year in funding granted the zoo by our city, we come out last at 12%, and that was without reducing our funding. If we reduce our funding to what's recommended, that puts us at about 9% or about 1983 levels. In 2008, 393,340 people came to the zoo through the gates of the zoo in Brownsville. 161,750 came from Brownsville. 231,590 came from Rio Grande Valley outside of Brownsville, and 54,299 came from outside of the Rio Grande Valley. According to the survey delect, uh, survey data collected and analyzed by DK Schiflett and Associates for the Office of the Governor, and using the spending averages for out-of-region travel in Texas, the zoo's out-of-valley visitors spent approximately $7.2 million in this area last year. Unfortunately, we have no data on how much the 230,000 out-of-Brownsville zoo visitors spent in Brownsville restaurants, stores, and other facilities, but we know they did spend money. The good news is that within the next several years, we can, plan to construct several new exhibits and facilities, and we already have a great start at getting these projects funded by outside spon- sponsors and foundations. A reaching, a recent matching grant made available through Texas Parks and Wildlife Department will finish out our plans to develop the old railroad property closest to Sixth Street into a South Texas botanical exhibit with a unique play area for kids. But in order to continue attracting visitors to this area, we have to minimally maintain the zoo. As I have said before, it's 38 years old, and some parts are looking a little, a little tired. From 2007 to the end of 2009, we'll, will have spent over $1 million in repairs and renovations. While our staff and board members beat the bushes in search of outside funding to build a new dinat- new dynamic exhibits and attractions, we look to the city to help continue to upgrade our buildings and our equipment, so that we continue to operate at our current levels. We need hotel motel tax dollars to continue to promote our programs and events to people outside of our region. Just as the city has supported the zoo and its efforts over the years, our board and our staff feel strongly that the zoo should continue to be an asset and a source of pride for Brownsville and its residents. I know we can count on your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birchfield. Uh, Mr. Horn, Barry Horn?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Brownsville benefits from the diverse efforts of multiple cultural arts organizations founded by community volunteers during the early to the mid 20th century. This has resulted in multiple venues in which one can enjoy an enhanced quality of life in Brownsville. This is available not only for our children and fellow citizens, but for those fortunate enough to discover themselves either recreating or doing business on the border by the sea. A once viable organizational structure, consisting of a group of community volunteers endeavoring to provide services for the general public, is no longer workable. What has evolved across the country are boards of trustees, who engage professional management, marketing, and development teams to fulfill their visions and strategic plans in order to provide as good a product as modest means will permit. At this time of economic downturn and demands on scarce resources, the Museum of Fine Arts pledges to participate with the city at the funding level the commissioners and mayor are able to agree upon. In addition, the Museum of Fine Art would like to petition the commissioners and mayor to consider tasking the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee to dialogue with the various cultural arts organizations to seek a viable structure, providing services to the city that does not result in disenfranchising organizations that exist in part as a result of the extensive investments already made by the city. I feel the baby and the bathwater analogy is appropriate here. The City of Brownsville has an award-winning Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau, a school district that excels in the fine arts, and a university that raises the bar for standards of excellence every semester. These are just a few community organizations that stand to benefit from the development of cooperation, and stand to lose a great deal when they have to announce to prospective investors in Brownsville that we don't have much quality of life down here, because we just can't afford it down here. I wish to ask the commissioners and mayors to take another look at the purpose of the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee, and consider seeking solutions that work for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Uh, Mr. Stephen Scholl?
Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, my name is Stephen Scholl, I'm the president of the Board of Directors, uh, for the Camille Playhouse. I, along with our supporters here today, am very concerned about the future of culture and the arts in the City of Brownsville. Since its inception in 1963 by a group of speech and drama teachers, the Camille Players, as they were called, have come a long way from giving performances in an abandoned cotton sampling warehouse to the location where the Camille Playhouse stands today. Through a grant from the Sams Foundation, the theater was built for use by the citizens of Brownsville in Dean Porter Park, on land donated by the city. And on January 1st, 1965, Mr. Earl Quater Sams, founder of the Sams Foundation, dedicated the playhouse- dedicated the playhouse to his daughter, Camille Samz Leitner, Gladys Porter's sister. Over the years, the Camille Playhouse has continued to be a great source of history, culture and entertainment for the citizens of Brownsville, both young and old alike. As we get ready to celebrate our forty-sixth season, we are the only place to see and enjoy live community theater in the Rio Grande Valley. We currently offer six main stage shows throughout the year that have included comedies, dramas and musicals. During the Christmas season, multiple performances of the holiday shows are scheduled throughout the day for both public and private schoolchildren. This has increased our attendance dramatically for the past several years. In addition, these performances have given schoolchildren the option of experiencing culture by attending a live theater production performed by community members instead of, instead of their yearly trek to the movie theater. The production schedule also includes a youth theater production in the spring performed by local teenagers and two summer workshops for kids. These workshops allow children of all ages the opportunity to learn the art of acting, singing, makeup, set construction and costuming while also performing in a production. Many of the children that are now in youth theater and are ready to make the jump to main stage have made their way up from several summers of workshop, and several others have gone on to study theater in college. One person in particular has gone on to become the artistic director of the Washington Ballet at the Kennedy Center in Washington, DC. The Camille Playhouse is part of the cultural, arts and entertainment aspect of Brownsville. We'd like to consider ourselves a cultural attraction, part of Brownsville's quality of life, offering alternative cultural entertainment value to Brownsville residents and tourists alike. From our local theater patrons to our winter season, our winter Texans' season ticket holders, we have something for everyone at the Camille Playhouse. We understand completely that the CAAC had guidelines to follow and peer review panels to listen to. But the final decision is up to you all, Mayor and City Commissioners. Please reconsider allocating funding to the Camille Playhouse. Brownsville and its citizens have so much to lose if this doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scholl. Mr. Moore, Edward Moore?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm on the board at the Brownsville Historic Museum. Uh, first of all, and with regard to this, I would, uh, challenge the, uh, zero balance for our museum for this year for a number of reasons. I, following with Barry Horn and the discussion of Camille Theater, there are a number of points I'd like to make. Uh, first of all, three of these organizations that have been zeroed out are in the Mid-Cultural District. The Mid-Cultural District is recognized by this same group for the efforts to get the museums to work together and cooperate and have a variety of programs that benefit the city of Brownsville. Camille Playhouse, the, uh, uh, Historic Brownsville Museum and the Fine Arts, all have been active in that. And many, this is a slap in the face to volunteers, especially those who collected the millions of dollars that it took to renovate Dean Porter Park and to create what is now the Mid-Cultural District. With regard first to one of the items that was on the list for the Palo Alto Battlefield for the Archaeological Fair, that's an international organization, that's an international event. The first year that they had it, there was two hundred participants. La- the last time they had it, there were over eight hundred participants. That request for three thousand dollars was from our museum because our staff went to the battlefield during this period and set up a educational program for the students in conjunction with BISD so that students could be taken and be given lessons in archaeological exploration. So that was, that wa- is a, a amount of money that we were asking so that we can continue to do that. And again, it's an international archaeological fair, and people came in from a variety of places. The, the efforts of the CAC, as far as I'm concerned, are slap in the face to many volunteers in this city. Uh, many who give a great deal of time and to get, and give, in some cases, even their own money. Uh, and this committee, which was, as far as I'm concerned, I'll speak bluntly, it was centered with a downtown core organization, and I think the agenda was, just as you've seen in terms of the presentation tonight, that may be harsh, people may not want to hear it. The, why were no members of the CAC from any of these organizations, for, for instance, that were zeroed out? Why were they all, why was this whole thing focused downtown? Why were we competing against organizations and, uh, applications for things in the future that don't exist now? This whole program, it, the results of it establishes and directs policy in the city of Brownsville, which I think only you ladies and gentlemen should be doing in terms of organization. In terms of the process, and I know that our, our application looked pretty bad, it's almost like someone, uh, I attended the peer review with our executive director. And yes, we had some problems. We, we were given the requirement and given twenty-three days from the first of February to the twenty-third of February to complete that application. We had one staff member in our museum at that time. We tried to put this together as much as we could, and I think we did a pretty good job. When we went to the peer review, we were told that we could make corrections and resubmit the information. The resubmitted information was not considered. The re-information, the, the re- our information that was changed, for instance, large annual surpluses. We don't have large annual surpluses. It was an error in the format, and we told them that that day, and it was corrected. We do not have surpluses. If we did, we probably wouldn't ask for the amount of money we did. Utilities, it was discovered during this process, after we put the application in, that our utilities charge was including the charges of other museums. And I'm not sure why, but it was a tr- tremendous amount of money because we were paying the utilities cost for other facilities, or it looked like we were asking it in terms of the city. It says in this, "Exhibits do not differ from local art galleries." Last year, we had a, we had a car show in Brownsville. Uh, this year, the car show was copied by someone else. Uh, we have, we have joined forces with a number of elements, including the Palo Alto Battlefield, uh, the Amigos Artistas, to give a variety of programs. And we have, over the years, and ours is the oldest museum in town, had displays that represent far more than just art. Far more than art. We have the Selaya locomotive there, which, uh, many people in this communit- community dedicated hours and hours, thousands of hours of their work to renovate. And we have many guests, uh, many people who come in just to see that. Uh, again, I would ask that you reconsider the, uh, information. I would ask that, uh, the information that we provided in our updated application be considered. And I would ask that the Brownsville Historic Museum, uh, be funded so that we can continue the function that we've, uh, carried on for many years.
You also work with, very closely with BISD, don't you?
Yes.
With the children?
Our education, our education facility, which again is a product of a donation by the Atwoodia family, uh, we, we use it for a variety of meetings. And in essence, BISD has many of their off-campus workshops there. We have a number of programs with ISD, BISD, where Matisella and the staff members actually go out to the schools to present these programs about history, because it's very difficult to bring busloads of children into most of these museums. So we go to them, and we have a program to do that. We assisted BISD in establishing their museum in the old high school on Palm Boulevard. So we're doing far more than just putting on an art show. And I, I, I think that, uh, information on here with regard to our museum, uh, is skewed a bit. And I, again, I would ask you to reconsider. I, as you know, I'm on the Housing Authority Board, and we can go in and ask for millions of dollars, and we're allowed to update our application. But in the case here, we were not.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Wadwani?
Mr. Wadwani and myself will, uh, share the three minutes, if y'all don't mind. We represent the whole hotel industry. Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Garza, and I am the manager of the La Quinta Inn Hotel. I have a prepared statement I'm gonna read to y'all. We, the hoteliers, feel that the laws and regulations set forth by the state of Texas for hotel occupancy tax, better known as hot monies, should be allocated seventy percent for promotion, marketing and tourism to putting heads in beds. The remaining thirty percent should be distributed among these other groups who have applied for these monies. The newly formed cultural committee has done an excellent job in processing their recommendations to you tonight. I believe everyone in the hotel industry supports all these groups who have applied for these monies. The more money we invest in putting heads in beds, the more people we have visiting Brownsville and our wonderful attractions. We can't compete with six million dollars South Padre Allen spends or four million dollars that McAllen spends on putting heads in beds. We, the hoteliers, would like to request that we be part of the selection committee to decide who will be chosen to implement these funds that you allocate for putting heads in beds. Also, we would like to have ample representation on the board that will oversee the implementation of these funds. And number three, we would like to take part in putting together a marketing plan that will bring us more heads in beds. The more heads in beds we have, the more sales revenues we have.
Respected, respected Mayor and respected Commissioners. According to me, the economy will be bad till two thousand and twelve. There is no secret that the whole world is suffering now. Two thousand and ten will be bad than two thousand and nine. The worst year will be two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Please write it down if you want to. If you do not get a help from Commissioners now, you will see the hotel closing one by one. You do not want to this thing to happen now. Sales are down, and this will affect the city also. We need someone who has a full knowledge and experience of the hotel business. We will agree your item D on the workshop regarding the city hiring the people, but we want you to make some changes. We want four changes over there. We want someone who has experience of a hotel and motel. From McAllen, Laredo or El Paso, or elsewhere, get somebody who has really experience though. We do not want to compare their system anymore. Please, for God's sake, please, we don't want any more compare their system. That has to be stopped. We will hope, we, we like hotelers, would like to be the selection committee to recommend hire of the person, of the com- of the comp- company to manage the funds. We recommend to hire only two percent instead of the three percent to save the money. We also like seven members on the board and four being from the hotelers. I do not think we ask for too much for the changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wadwani. Okay, that concludes the, um, discussion regarding the Cultural Affairs Advisory. It's not an action item right now, it's just a workshop. Uh, can we table some of these, B, C or D, uh, so we can get to our regular meeting?
May I have the floor before that to make a comment? Ladies and gentlemen that are present, thank you for your time in coming to the meeting and expressing your concerns, either for or against the committee. And for those of you that are leaving, my comment is strictly directed also towards you. Uh, we've made the time to be able to listen to your concerns, and we're sympathetic, and we want to work with you. I would invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting as where we're gonna undertake the begin, and begin the process with our city budget so that you can see what it is that this city commission is working with and the finances that we're trying to deal with to be able to not raise your taxes and to be able to function within the money that's allocated to, through our citizens. So in essence, we have sat through this, we have heard your, of your concerns. And I would invite you that you stick with us and join us for the rest of the meeting so that you can see, in essence, what it is that the city's going through financially at this time. Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Commissioner Agathon.
Uh, we have a lot of people here for B and C. I don't know if you wanna...
Uh, we got David Garcia. Would you, could we do it, uh, the next two weeks? Would that be okay with y'all? Okay, uh, if the Commission has no problem, we can do it in two weeks. About, uh, C, uh, B is the...
B, B are from out of towns, though.
B's are from out of town?
The people are from out of town.
Okay, well, then we'll do B. Can we table D then, C and D?
Yes, I am interested in tabling D so we could invite Scott Jozlove of the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association from the state.
So can I have a motion to table C and D, and then, uh, we'll take B?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're gonna take, that way you don't have to wait, David. Thank you very much. We'll go to B.
Item B, presentation and discussion by Purchasing Power.
Hey, David. Your meeting went well? He just left, David. Okay, who do we have here for, uh, B, okay?
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, and I appreciate you taking the time while we breathe. She's, uh, putting the, uh, the presentation up there. The product that I'm gonna be talking about is a product called Purchasing Power. It's actually an employee purchase program, and it's, it's gonna be a new concept. And I'd like to ask, there's a lot of questions that are gonna come up, and I'll be brief in my presentation, but there's a lot of questions that are gonna come up that I'll will hit in the, in the process. So if, uh, if you'll just bear with me, uh, I will have...
How long is your presentation?
About, about seven minutes.
The other one?
The next one.
Presentation?
The changing economy, I know that every, everything's brought up about the changing economy and the impact that it has on your employees, and this program is designed to help that impact. Employees feel vulnerable at work today with, uh, twelve point two out of work since February, eighty-four million credit challenged, uh, out of a hundred and nineteen. Tightening credit lines, increasing requirements, increasing demand for electronics, computers and appliances. The financial wellness impacts the employees. Fifteen to twenty percent of employees have financial problems severe enough to negatively affect their productivity. What the challenges that employees are facing today is keeping morale high with all the changes and, and, and reductions of staff and, and increasing of work within the current staff, and reducing healthcare costs and retirement benefits. So a program like ours is designed to build goodwill and morale throughout a, throughout a city. And it's a, it has all the elements that, of a legitimate, clear and easy, of real value, no headaches, and it's a, and it's a program that's on, in demand. So those are the major challenges. And here are some of our clients, and I'm gonna get into the meat and potatoes of our, of our products, but just some of our nationwide clients. We have HEB Foods here, we have the Border Patrol, the federal government, and we're working with several other entities in the area getting the process rolling. So just a snapshot of some of our clients. The basics are, is employees use payroll deduction to purchase name brand computers, electronics, appliances and other products at no risk or no liability to the, to the city. Uh, we handle all the marketing, eligibility, payment process from start to finish. Uh, the products we offer, computers, home appliances and electronics. And sp- basically with, with these, with these products, these are products that individuals don't have the ability to go into a local retail store and get the available credit, or if they... they are getting the credit, it's at an additional rate higher than, than twenty-three to twenty-four percent APR. So, it's a convenient, easy alternative to traditional financing for those employees without access to. We have over a hundred clients and five million eligibles with a five to ten percent consistent year participation. This is just a case study. This is Cleveland Clinic, just showing you some of the stats, twenty-four thousand eligibles, penetration of thirteen point five percent. This is Rite Aid at sixty-five thousand employees at nine point six participation. So, it's a program that's very unique, and it's designed for a, for the individuals. In the next slide. Who we are, we access to finance and credit for quality named products, no down payment, credit checks, or finance charges, all through payroll deduction, pricing is above retail but less than other financing options. We are not a group plan, not a discount plan, not a low quality reseller. All of our products are new, name brand products that come with manufacturer's warranty. Where we lie in the spectrum of things, comparing us to cash and retail financing, we fall right in the middle, but with no credit check and no additional financing. Typical eligibility, you have to make at least a minimum of sixteen thousand dollars a year and have a tenure for the city of twelve months. You have to work for the city for twelve months. And our credit limits are, we don't just open a line of credit to, unlimited line of credit, we do have our limitations, and those range from a low end of twenty-five hundred and a high end of four thousand. These are just some customer quotes, I won't bore you with that. The next plan, next slide, please. How this program works, we have three different, three times of the year that we market this program and open it up eligibility, and that's March fifteenth, July fifteenth, and November fifteenth. And we handle all of the marketing and costs, cost of all the programs, so there's no additional cost for the city, but Purchasing Power handles that internally. Next. Just some of the sample materials. Next. Testimonial, this is just how much it impacts the morale and goodwill of an organization when the employees have the ability to purchase the items that they are either having to go to rent to own or finance at high, or not even getting it off. Just about getting started in the process, it's a very simple process, takes four to six weeks after implementation. Next. And then just, next. Little bit of the demographics in this, and this is the last slide, and then I'll go to Q and A, but just kind of our demographics of who is our purchaser, seventy percent female, thirty percent male. Our biggest income is, our biggest buying group is between forty and forty-nine, and then our biggest income is between thirty and fifty. So, there's a lot of individuals that are utilizing this program that makes substantial amounts of money. Next. And just the product sales of what we sell and who we sell, and what types of products and the different varieties and percentages per category. That's it in a nutshell. I'd like to open it up for a question.
I just like said, I met with them earlier, and the reason why it kind of fascinated, because it is being used in government entities, basically, employees for the city of Brownsville, police, fire, they're struggling right now to make ends meet. This is just a way where they can purchase appliances, stuff they may need, through payroll deduction, that's all it is. They, there's no risk to the city, and employee must fall within the range that he specified, and it's just an option for employees, say, you know what, I might, I need this, I can't afford it right now with the prices of gas and everything, I can go through the city, and they'll deduct it out of my payroll. Basically, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's correct, in a nutshell.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Goulin?
Thank you. Do you take into account the other debt that the, that the employee may have? In other words, do you check to see if they're overextended otherwise?
We do not run credit checks, and with the way that we run our tenure and our underwriting requirements, we are running as a company of all of our clients, not only about a five percent loss ratio.
They have to agree on the payroll deduction.
Yes.
That's a guarantee, Commissioner Goulin.
And it's paid off, paid off in a twelve month period, so it's not like we're letting it extend out on two.
Can they do...
Here, the question would be to the city manager, would it be hard for you to implement this into the system, city manager?
As you know, Mayor, we have payroll deductions for other type of employee benefits, et cetera. Not the best thing to do, no. We don't really like it, but we can work with it.
We can work with it. Mayor.
Commissioner Goulin wanted to say something.
I just had one more question. Are they allowed to take two things, like, you know, three thousand dollars this month for the older child's computer, and two months from now, another three thousand for another computer?
It's limited to a monetary...
One at a time?
...value in a twelve month period.
Commissioner Sanwana?
Yes, is there an interest rate that's charged?
There's not, not an interest, it's all inclusive in the packaging, like the slide I showed, that we, we are a little, it's an access program where there's no additional financing, the cost is what it is, and it covers the taxes and the delivery and the warranty, and also it's all inclusive.
And does the city bear any burden, should the employee leave the city?
Absolutely not. It's up to, it's up to us between the employee and the, and...
All we do is payroll deduction.
Yeah, that's the only thing they have to do.
And the city manager has no problem with it.
I wouldn't say that, no, Mayor. I would like to hear more about this, but I wouldn't say I don't have a problem with that. I think we, financially, and having to take all the work on in doing that, I think we would have an issue with it.
Maybe we can charge a fee for it or something. Okay, why don't you give it to the city manager and discuss to see if this is feasible?
Okay, I can do that.
Is that okay? And then come back with the recommendation from the city manager, is that okay?
Mayor, hold on, I think...
Come back to us to see, you know, plenty, offer this to the employees, and be the conduits to where we do the payroll deduction, if you feel comfortable with it. If you don't, you need to tell us.
Pete, did you have a question?
I don't feel comfortable with it right now, no, but we're always willing to speak, yes.
Pete, I think, Pete, you had a comment?
Yes, I would like to study...
Commissioner Calabria was recognized first, wait a second.
I'd like to ask Pete if he wanted to say something, go ahead, please.
Certainly want to study it first before we commit ourselves, because what we've seen in the past, when we have payroll deductions, we have employees that enroll, and then they, later on, they drop, and that creates a burden for us. Again, it depends how many people are going to enroll, but that can, that can create problems.
There's always reasons why not to do something. If this is for the benefit of the employee, and it's an employee's choice, and if it's not a huge burden on the city, we should be facilitators if it's possible, if there's no risk to the city, okay? And it's not something that we cannot do, or something like that. Now, if it's something that manager says no, because it's too much trouble, it takes too much time, it's too costly, I understand that, but this is something that could help employees that are having a hard time, like Commissioner Hacketson says.
I agree with you.
Let's look at it, get, sit down with the management and yourself and the gentleman here, and see if it's a viable thing before we say no. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, so we finished with our workshop, the others were tabled, none of them are action items. Let's call for a ten minute recess, so everybody can stretch their legs.
We have an executive session.
We have an executive session, okay.
May I read, may I read that, please?
Read it, read it.
Executive, executive session, discussion pursuant to section five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code regarding a report by the Brownsville, Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation to the City Commission regarding economic development negotiation.
When we go into executive session?
Second.
Let me call for the motion, okay? We have a motion in a second. Motion made by Commissioner Oladipo, second by Commissioner Torianni. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Y'all have a break while we're in the executive session, and stretch your legs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Brad Burke will lead us in the invocation. Please remain standing and remove your headgear.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you that you love Brownsville, and that you love us as individuals. Lord, we do want to be blessed, we do want to be prospered, and we see that in your word, and we ask for that for the city of Brownsville. We also see in your word that obedience and prosperity goes together, so, Lord, we ask you to help us to become more obedient to you in your heart. And, Lord, for this meeting, we ask you to bless the mayor, bless each of the commissioners, and, Lord, bless the items that are transpired here, Lord. Help each of us to treat each other with respect, and let the outcome of this meeting one that blesses you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. I don't know much about military or the rank or anything like that, but I, I notice we have somebody that's pretty well decorated, and I inquired, we have a lieutenant colonel from the Army here, Lieutenant Colonel Marcos, would you please stand, and she's honoring us with her presence, please give her a round of applause. And before I continue with the agenda, we have also some visitors that we're hosting here in Brownsville. Vice Consul Virgina, would you please come forward with your guest that came to the Mexican consul, the mayor, Alejandro Nava, and his delegation from Iguitla, Hidalgo, would you please come forward over here? Okay, this is a little impromptu, but they're here visiting Brownsville, they have an interest in developing a sister city relationship. They presented to me today with a request, and I will be forwarding that to the city manager to get out to the city commission, and based on that, we want to welcome them to Brownsville. They've been spending the day here learning about Brownsville, they visited with the chamber, they visited with Economic Development, Jason Hiltz. They went and saw our zoo, and I don't know what else they've been exploring here, so we welcome the opportunity to show them our home, our city, and welcome them here. Thank you. Let's do the presentation real quick, like I said, this is a little impromptu, if the Commission will come down with me for a photo, it would be great. The bags, Commissioner, if you want. Grab the bag.
First, before, my sincere congratulations to the citizen president of here in Brownsville, and also... como también agradezco a toda la ciudadanía que me ha abierto las puertas, créanme que me siento como en mi casa, porque ahora sí que no hay palabras para expresar lo que he sentido junto con el equipo y mi familia que estamos aquí con ustedes. Les agradezco a todos, y creo que lo que yo le vengo a pedir es una relación de hermanos entre cambio de culturas, ya que nosotros, en nuestro municipio, hay 185 comunidades o ranchits, como le llaman, y 95 colonias. El dialecto de ahí es el Nahuatl, las tres cuartas partes del municipio habla el dialecto Nahuatl. Tenemos mucha cultura, sobre todo las artesanías, que es lo de barro, y muchas cosas más, que sí me gustaría compartir con ustedes, como también, pues mandar a nuestra gente a que consuman hacia ustedes. Gracias, y que Dios bendiga a todos.
For those that don't know, Huitla is Hidalgo's about two hours from Tampico, it's in the Huasteca region there, and they're indigenous people, and they have a lot of traditions and culture, and they do a lot of wood, artesanías, and clay, so maybe one of these days we'll take a delegation and go visit them over there. Bienvenidos y gracias, eh? Por favor, tomen el sitio. Consul, muchas gracias, muy amables gracias. On behalf of Consul Victor Trevino, who's on vacation, will be back tomorrow, he would have been here, it would have been possible, but he's not here right now. Okay, so now, let's go to the item A of executive session, we're back in session, does somebody want to take any action on this?
You want to move that out of sequence?
Pardon me?
Did you want to move that out of sequence?
Yeah, it should be automatically the first thing we take up when we come back.
I guess this time I'd make a motion for a letter of support on behalf of the city commission and the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tronani, second by Commissioner Gawain, a letter of support based on our discussion in the executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson abstained. Okay, we're back in a regular meeting, commissioners report, Commissioner Atkinson, we'll start with you.
Regarding the sports park, sometime this week, hopefully Thursday, where's Delena? She's somewhere around here. Thursday, we should break ground, or Friday, on six state-of-the-art sand volleyball courts. If you look around at some of the Sonics, you see a lot of people playing volleyball and stuff like that, it's part of our Phase Two, it was supposed to be our Phase One project, but it turned out to be Phase Two, but we're bringing it to the forefront this year, and we're starting to break ground, hopefully at the end of this week, and it should be really nice for a lot of people to go out there, hopefully in the evening we have lighting out there, we'll be able to provide tournaments out there for sand volleyball, it's a growing sport. With that, we also, there's a growing need for sand soccer, I've never, this was brought to my attention, sand soccer, I guess it's a growing sport, so those volleyball courts will be...
Multi-use.
Multi-use with sand soccer, so that's something, that's something neat for some of the children of Brownsville to get into. As far as District Two Streets, I'll move on to my next one, right now, if y'all look at McDavid, we finished McDavid, and if you notice, we're putting in sidewalks. There's a big need for sidewalks in my district and Brownsville as a whole, so I'm committed, and if there's anybody out there who's in need of some sidewalks in their streets, let me know, I'll tackle that, that, I think, as far as our special needs, there's a lot of special needs in my district that I get in touch with that are in need of some sidewalks that are accessible for wheelchairs, so I'm committed to that, so if there's anybody, not just in my district, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be selfish with my district, but anywhere around Brownsville, bottom line, we need to provide better sidewalks for the community of Brownsville. And if you see McDavid, they're building the sidewalks there, so I'm impressed with what the city's doing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to the proclamations, Lieutenant Colonel Nora Ramirez Marcos, would you please come forward? Commissioner Gawain, put this on the agenda, if we'll go down, present her the proclamation.
I am very honored to sponsor this commendation for you, whereas Nora Ramirez is a native daughter of Brownsville, born April the 8th, 1968, grew up and attended local schools before graduating from Pace High School in 1986, and whereas in 1986, U.S. Representative Solomon Ortiz appointed her to the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, New York, where she graduated in 1990 as a second lieutenant in the United States Army, and whereas in 1991, second lieutenant Nora Ramirez was, after completing airborne school at Fort Benning, Georgia, deployed to the Middle East with the 141st Signal Battalion, First Armored Division, and was awarded a Bronze Star for her achievements during the period of March the 17th, I'm sorry, January the 17th to March the 2nd, 1991. And whereas Nora Ramirez, on December the 31st, 1995, married Elmer Marcos, also a dedicated soldier, and they have two children, a daughter 11 and a son 5, and whereas on February the 1st, 2007, Nora Ramirez Marcos was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Army, and is attached to the Special Troops Battalion, Third Infantry Division, based at Fort Stewart, Georgia, which is scheduled for an October deployment to Iraq, where she and her unit will be part of a multinational division north, and where she will command a battalion of 900 soldiers. And whereas Lieutenant Colonel Nora Ramirez Marcos is a dedicated patriot who represents the very best America has to offer, who has given 19 years of her life to the people of the United States of America, and to whom we wish a speedy and safe return to her home and family once she has done her duty in Iraq. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby commend and thank Lieutenant Colonel Nora Ramirez Marcos for her dedicated service to our country, and further wish her well in all her future endeavors, done on this fourth day of August, 2009.
around that are in a supporting role, that never get the props that they deserve, that really make this government body work. I'm truly honored to be the Army's ambassador to Brownsville, but more importantly, Brownsville's ambassador to the Army. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm from Brownsville, Texas, it's the kind of city that builds a park to honor our veterans, builds a school, a high school, and names it Veterans Memorial High School, where they proudly wave the U.S. flag, and they still have a Fourth of July parade. And anyone who listens to me knows that my dad was a migrant farm worker, who was the first of his family to graduate from high school and college, and that my mom and her family, they can trace their lineage back to the 16th century, and she and my uncle, Ernesto De Leon, they're members of Brownsville's pioneer family. I'm a proud Mexican-American, I'm a proud Brownsvilleite, and sometimes, normally, usually always, I'm an obnoxious Texan. But as for the Army's ambassador to Brownsville, I want you to know and understand that I receive this honor not just for myself and my family, but for all soldiers, and I'll tell you that our soldiers are tired, and the families are tired, of this constant treadmill of deployments. In my unit, I know soldiers that have deployed four times, they're going back for their fourth deployment, and it's hard, we need a larger army to enable us to increase our time at home, spread out these deployments. We recently were granted a temporary increase of 22,000 soldiers that brings our soldiers' active-duty strength to 569,000, and this will help, but we're tired, and I assure you, we're resolute and we're resilient. We believe in what we're doing, and there's no greater honor than to defend the ideals of our Constitution. The Army's a place where a young American can go and have every opportunity to succeed, and it's not perfect, but it's as close to anything in our society that is perfect. People often ask me what I like about the Army, and after 19 years, I've grown to like the fact that I have to get up at 6:00 a.m. for physical training. I like that I'm a part of a profession that consistently ranks number one as the most respected profession by the citizens of this country, and I love that my profession has an ethos that states, "I will never quit, I will never accept defeat, and I will never leave a fallen comrade." But at the end of the day, if you ask me what I love most about my job, it's knowing that whenever my daughter has to write or draw about her hero, her hero was and forever will be a soldier. So I thank you again for this honor and your prayers and continued support, and as I prepare for this deployment, I remember that Brownsville is a foundation of my upbringing, heck, Beena Y'all was my basketball coach when I was in the second grade, so that's how far it goes back. Brownsville's part of who I am, and it will always be in my heart. Again, I thank you for this honor.
Yes. Ms. Lijia Quadra? Lijia Quadra. Lijia. I have it here, it's up at your station.
Just a few words, because Lijia Quadra is a volunteer, a great city leader, who had an idea of creating a building of the library for the parents to be involved in the use of their children. So we came up with this mayor's reading club, that was now a recurre. She dedicated all her energies and time, very frustrating at first, and I couldn't speak together, and I thought, oh, she hosted it at the Southland Center, where I think it's mainly potentially more of a city. The Southland area is one-third of our city, and I think we want to make a contribution to proclaimation and recognition of the volunteer, this private program, and succeed, and hopefully we continue to, that the parents should be more involved in the children, and more interacting, believing, and wanting, and seeing, and supporting.
A proclamation of the city commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Lijia Quadra for her community service. Whereas Lijia Quadra is a native of Nicaragua, born on a farm outside Managua, raised and educated in her native country, and whereas in the 1990s, she fled an ongoing war in her country and wound up in Canada, where she became fluent in the French language and was able to teach French in Managua, Nicaragua, once she was able to return to her home country. And whereas she later received a bachelor's degree from a Nicaraguan university, and quickly established herself in the world of business, both as a manager and a minority owner, including organizing her own company in Chile in 2000. And whereas Lijia Quadra came to the U.S. in 2003 as an international student, gaining a bachelor's and master's degree in special education, and whereas, as an international student, Lijia Quadra worked in several communities as a volunteer for local development, and in 2008, she became a stockholder of Mas Incorporated, providing reading assistance to the Brownsville and San Benito School Districts. And whereas, since arriving in Brownsville, Lijia Quadra has worked at teaching reading skills to parents through the Apasionados por la Lectura, or Passion for Reading Program, and has also found the time to begin her formal application for American citizenship. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize Lijia Quadra for her contributions to literacy in our community, done on this the fourth day of August, 2009, signed by Pat Ahmada, Junior, Mayor and City Commissioners.
since last year, and when I took the opportunity to meet him, I mentioned about my project. When I graduate, I have like a dream, I have a dream that I can serve this community, because when I come to this country, I realize that most of the children here in this area, in Brownsville City, they have parents who cannot help them to read in English, however, they can support them in Spanish, because we have bilingual program here in Brownsville. So when I met him, I didn't think about, maybe I can be seen to him as a very, you know, I took the opportunity and I talked to him, and I continued to call him again and again until I get the opportunity to start with this program. This is a volunteer program, I want to thanks to Mr. Orellana, my husband, who is the person who sponsored this program, because there is no way, you know, I have to look for, at the beginning, when you got to start a program, and if you don't have the resources, the economic resources, only my family, my son also, and actually, I want to, I have many people here who support this program, because my goal is to demonstrate that those parents, even though they don't speak the language in this country, they can also, they can really support their children at home, because there is a theory... Because there is a theory who says, that says that if you are available to develop the native tongue of a children, and you can literate those children well in the native tongue, those children can better make the transition to English language. So I want to thank you, those parents, and those parents now are going to be parent trainers for the community. Thank you so much.
Okay, that was the fun part of the commission meeting, now let's get to work. Item four.
Item three, Mayor.
Item three, okay, presentation. Employee of the Month, okay, one more thing. Who's the employee of the month this year?
I got it right here, man. Let's welcome the employee of the month for August 09, Mr. James Campbell. James? James has worked with the bus system for, since 1994, he's been serving there for 15 years now. He started from the lower ranks, administrative tech one, he moved up in the ranks to being a maintenance supervisor, to what his responsibility is now, which is a urban system, a quality assurance technician at the bus. He has really done well in his efforts to accomplish the highest standard of quality with the bus system by even attending college on his own and assuring that he could cope with the responsibilities that were going to be forthcoming. His accomplishments have been many, he set up a bench test system to help him through troubleshoot problems that may arise with automatic vehicle locators, mobile date computers, vehicle modems, and radio systems. He has also become the resident expert on various technologies used at the bus system, including fire boxes, video surveillance system, destination signs, terminal public announcement system, ticket vending machines, and change machines. He just does it all for us, and plus, he has found a way to develop a training type scenario for any and all employees that work there at the bus system. So congratulations, James, he is the employee of the month for August, he's eligible for the employee of the year at our banquet in December. And of course, he gets a day off, he gets the pins, the employee of the month pin, the cap that'll go well with that shirt, and the employee of the month award, James Campbell from the Brownsville Urban System, recognition of outstanding services rendered to the City of Brownsville for the month of August 2009. Thank you. I'll turn it over to James for a few comments.
Oh, I have to say something? Mr. Campbell pretty much stated everything, you know, to be true, and, you know, I've stated to my supervisor and/or director in the past, I mean, my priority one is the City of Brownsville, it has been for 15 years, and hopefully another five. You know, everything that I've implemented and I've done is not only for myself, but to better the department, and, you know, just move on, keep going. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. It's no secret, the majority of the people here are for item 16. Could I have a motion, so we don't have, hold them hostage here to move up item 16? I'm sure they got other things to do. We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, and then we have a second by Commissioner Toreyani. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Let's move up item 16. City Secretary, would you please read it?
Consideration and action on Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee's funding recommendations and funding contract for fiscal year 2010.
Look, obviously, there was a lot of questions and a lot of disenchantment, I guess, I don't know if that's the word, as to how this all evolved in the conclusion of where we're at right now for us to consider, but if I detected the consensus in the commission that we need to further continue looking at this, I would ask that this be tabled or that we discuss it by allowing the city manager to proceed as he has before and coming back with recommendations as they have done before through the budgetary process. So we can either table it or, is that okay? Is there any recommendation before we table it? No, okay.
Second to move table.
Motion to table, but let me ask for the motion, ask for the motion to table, Commissioner Atkinson makes a motion, Commissioner Toreyani seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, this will be further discussion on this and see which direction we're going to go, okay? Thank you, and I appreciate you all coming. Nothing's going to be decided, because I think it would be inappropriate when there's so many ifs out there and so many things that we don't really fully understand yet, okay? So for those who want to be excused or wanted to be excused, those who want to stay, please Thank you for your involvement and participating and coming to the chambers here to be part of this discussion. Let's go back. Let's go back to item four.
Item four, consideration and action, agenda items, consent agenda items A through D.
Move to approve.
Okay, let me ask for the motion, please. Let's follow the process, that way we get in the habit of doing things according to the procedures. Okay, I call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Toreyani. Can I have a second? Motion by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion on any of the items? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item five.
Item five.
Consideration and action to appoint one member to the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term.
Delina? Do you have somebody that resigned?
Yes.
Honorable Mayor Commission, we had, as was mentioned earlier in the PowerPoint presentation, Ms. Rochelle Garza resigned due to moving out of the area, she moved out of the state. That position is then available for appointment, and it is Commissioner Dr. Gowan's appointment.
And I apologize, I'm not ready to make that appointment, I only found out about it a couple days ago.
Okay, the commissioner requested, I guess.
I would request that it be tabled.
The commissioner asked to be recognized and requested to be tabled.
Thank you.
Is anybody want to make a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Toreyani. Any discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
I'll make my question. The commissioner, I mean, the mayor recognized Commissioner Atkinson?
Mayor, yeah, I'd like to appoint Henry, uh...
Henry Riquelme.
Henry Riquelme. For the appointment of PUB Utilities Board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson?
Second.
Actually, I have a point of order that I'd ask before.
A motion by, I mean, a second by Commissioner Samora. Any discussion? All in favor?
Who's the point of order, Mayor?
I have not recognized anybody, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Based on the way it's gone down, I'm all opposed.
Commissioner, I ask if there was any discussion, you did not ask to be recognized.
I did ask to be recognized, I think it's on...
No, you didn't, when I asked.
Yes, I did, I said there's a point of order, and secondly, I said...
No, sir, you were out of order, you need to be recognized first.
Twice I've mentioned that there's a point of order.
But he needs to be recognized. Okay. What's your point of order?
The point of order was that I believe that myself and Dr. Gowan were the sponsoring parties of this, therefore, it would be our position to go first on this issue, and as such, I would say that Mr. Atkinson was out of order in cutting me off on this issue, and the chair was out of order in recognizing, I mean, Mr. Atkinson prior to me.
I asked to be recognized.
First of all, not so, because I even requested this to be put in the agenda by myself about a month ago, Stella.
I'm looking at the agenda right here, it says Commissioner AP Toreyani has a move in here.
I have Toreyani and Gowan.
I asked that it be put in the agenda also, but the thing is, the chair has a right to recognize whoever wishes to be recognized. The chair recognized Commissioner Atkinson, and that was a motion that I called for in a second, and that's allowed.
And I think I can answer that question, Mr. Mayor. The rule Commissioner Toreyani is referring to is under section four, the handling of a motion under Roberts rules. Debate on the question, it states immediately after stating the question, the chair should turn toward the maker of the motion to see if he wishes to be assigned the floor first in the debate, okay? It is a permissive, the Roberts rule states that it's something you should do in your discretion, it doesn't require you to do it.
But the maker of the motion right here that I recognized was Commissioner Atkinson.
I'd like to add some of that past practice, anybody can put something on the agenda, doesn't mean you have the right to go and make a motion before anybody else.
I didn't say that, what I said is...
No, I'm just making it known, I'm just making it known.
Well, I think the rule Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Toreyani is referring to is that rule.
Okay, but it's at the discretion of the chair, okay? And I have already ruled, I recognized Commissioner Atkinson, and he made the motion, and Commissioner Samora seconded, and I put it for a vote. Now, I asked for any discussion, nobody wanted to say anything, then I put it for a vote. Now, the vote is, who supports this? Can I have a show of hands if anyone speaks?
Well, before we get there, I'd like to make a comment or be recognized if I may.
I asked for the vote. I asked for discussion earlier, nobody asked to be discussed, to be heard, I asked for the vote, so the vote is, Commissioner Longoria, you're voting for this? Do you raise your hand?
Yes.
Okay, who else votes for it? Okay, we have two. Okay, three. Who's against?
Based on the process and nothing having to do with the applicant, I will vote against.
I'm asking for the vote, I'm not asking for discussion.
I'm simply making my vote, and my vote was nay based on the process.
Okay, we have a nay. Do we have another nay?
Nay, based on, I'm confused.
We have two nays and three ayes. Commissioner Camarillo, how do you do it?
I'm going to vote for it.
Okay, you got four ayes and two nays. I don't even have to vote, so prevailing is the ayes. Okay? Let's move on.
Hold your hands, watch us.
Let's move on. The next one, item seven.
Item seven, public hearing and action on first reading of resolution number 2009-048 to authorize the filing of amendments and application with the Federal Transit Administration and operating administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 USC Chapter 53 Title 23 United States Code and other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is our annual process for applying for some grants, we will be applying for four grants, and we're asking authorization, this is a public hearing, and authorization to apply the applications with the Federal Transit Administration.
Okay, this is a public hearing?
Move to close.
First, this is a public hearing, is anybody cool to ask this? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Close by Commissioner Atkinson, can I have a second? Can I have a second?
Second.
Close the public hearing, Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Toreyani. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing and action, public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2010 budget.
tax roll, certified tax roll from the Appraisal District on July 27. Subsequently to that, we had some revisions that were made by the Appraisal District that we received on July 31, and that it was Friday. And so what we're going to cover today is the proposed budget for 2010. By the way, I want to introduce Jorge Santillán, who has assisted me in preparation of this The, based on the calculations that we made, the effective tax rate for the city for the coming year is 65.4189. The effective rate is, gives you a estimated, it gives you how much money, in other words, the effective rate will equate to a certain amount of money that you received last year, the same amount, assuming that all the properties are the same from year to year, there is no changes, and that's how the effective rate is calculated. We are, in this case, we have two scenarios, we either maintain the effective rate of 65.4189, in this case, we are proposing a one penny increase of 66.4189, which is, in this case, the rate would go up 1.53%. The tax rate for 2008, and by the way, there is an error there, it should be on the second column, it should be 2009 tax rate, 65.0517 to 66.4189, we would be going 2% above the current tax rate that we have right now for tax year 2008 or fiscal year 2009. To your right, at the bottom, you see the distribution between general fund, which is the MNO, and the debt service. The 66.4189 would be divided into the general fund and debt service by those percentages and those dollar amounts, the 40, 80, 51 cents going to the general fund, 61, 43, 59, 77% to the general, 25, 61, 38 cents to the debt service, and 38.56% for the debt service. Going through the calculations, we determined that the debt service fund has sufficient reserves whereby we could allocate less of a percentage to the debt service fund and more to the general fund. So as we go along, we'll see that we are not funding 100% of our debt service, in the debt service fund, to make our bond payments, because there is an expected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2009 of almost $4 million, approximately 3.8 million. And as a result, we were able to allocate less of a rate to the debt service fund and go ahead and allow the general fund to keep a higher percentage. This are the history of the tax rates for the City of Brownsville for the last 20 years, and as you can see, in '91, we were at high of 75.05, and down the line, '92 was 74.83, and then we had 65.45 for several years, then in '99, we had 65, '67, in 2000, and so forth, all the way up to 2009, which is 65.0517, and we are proposing 66.4189. Assuming that the City Commission goes with our recommendation, this is the way the general fund would look like in 2010. We have the first column of the revenues for 2009 of 88 million, 034, 490, budget revenues for 2010 will decrease by two, almost $2 million, 85 million, 138, 084. We are making up some of the major difference in the property taxes, we would, general fund would gain 2.9... We would, general fund would gain 2.9 over the previous year. Sales tax continue with a decline. We also see a decrease in the surplus funds from the PUB, about 411,000. And we also have decreases in other areas such as intergovernmental. Now, on the intergovernmental, as grants come in during the year, obviously that number will change, but it will also have a subsequent expenditures to go with it. So, but that's the way it stands right now as far as intergovernmental revenues. On the expense side, general government, there's a decrease in all categories. When we met with the departments, we indicated to them that we wanted reductions in their budgets. We also, as you can see by those schedules here, we decreased the expenses by 5.9 million dollars, almost $6 million. If you look at the very bottom on the first column, you see a fund balance. We had a fund balance, a healthy fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2008 or the beginning of fiscal year 2009 of 18,583,316. As we look at the financials for this coming year, right now through July, we see that we're holding back on expenses. And if we continue doing this, we will be able to have a higher fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2009, and that's something we're, we definitely wanna, we wanna be there. Because we don't see our revenues improving between now and the end of the year, and that's because of the two major revenue sources, which is the sales tax continues to decline, as well as the transfers from the bridge, which are also declining, which are the causes that are Veterans Bridge. Looking at these two columns, right now, we have a 12.76 percent reserve. We did end the year last year with around 20, 20 percent. Again, looking at 2009, we know that our expenses are going to be below budget, so that's going to improve our fund balance at the end of the year. If you look at 2010, we're looking at almost a 10 percent reserve, assuming that the expenses that we have included, because we have included some individual cuts, that we can certainly look at it as we go along. The, this is the debt service fund, assuming that we get that penny increase. As you can see, we are allocating less money into the debt service fund because of our estimated fund balance of 3.9 million at the end of fiscal year 2009. So we're able to allocate some of that difference back into the general fund and keep it the same, that particular tax rate of 66 cents. This is a comparison between various, and again, the property tax is divided into two funds, the general fund for maintenance and operations, and the debt service to pay our debt. If you compare 2009 versus 2010, we see that the general fund will gain 1,328,314. Again, that's because we are allocating a higher tax rate to the general fund. At the very bottom, the distribution between the general fund and the debt service during fiscal year 2009, we had 3590, 353925 cents allocated to the general fund versus 40, 80, 51 going into fiscal year 2010. Debt service had a 296592 cents being decreased to 256138, and that's because of the surplus or high fund balance of 3.9 million expected at the end of fiscal year 2009. The, this is another comparison between fiscal year 2009 and 2010. As you can see, debt service is dropped by 1.6 million. If the City Commission decides to keep the effective rate of 654189, we will show on your left, upper left-hand square there, you'll see a zero increase compared to 2000, and again, the second column, the second, it should be 2009 tax year instead of 2008. The increase between 2008 and 2009 tax year or fiscal year 2009 with fiscal year 2010, we have an increase of 0.56 percent. But remember that the effective rate is 654189. That's the rate that we need to maintain, because that rate gives you the same revenues that we received in 2009. The distribution, then, on your right-hand bottom, is the distribution between general fund and debt service would now be 3980 for cents for the general fund, 2561 for debt service. Percentage-wise, would be 6084 and 3915. On your bottom-left corner, you see that the adjusted rollback rate right now is, would be 664423, meaning that the city would not, would not, it's nice if we just stay at, we cannot go above the rollback rate because if we go about that, the rollback rate when we approve the tax rate, that means that it would be subject to voter referendum. And that's the reason why we certainly don't wanna go about the 664423, and which we are not proposing. If we go again with the, with the, no, keeping the effective tax rate, then our rate in 2010 would be 654189. Assuming that we stay with the rate of the effective rate, then obviously our fund balance is going to decrease for 2010, and those are the numbers in, that we have there of 8,137,376 at the end of fiscal year 2010. And again, this is debt service fund. It's almost the same because the rate will be, for the debt service will be the rate, the same, so the decrease is not, it's almost the same as the other one with a rate increase of one penny. This is the rate for, I guess I have it wrong. It's 6644, it's, it shouldn't be 6644. It's a 60, 66, 65, whatever the rate. I just have it wrong upstairs. Next. This gives you the difference between 2009 and 2010 for that rate of 654189 would be 353925 going, 39851 going to the general fund and 256138, which is, remains the same for the debt service. The history of the tax rates for, since 95 all the way to 2009, it's been very consistent, about a 65 cents all the way through, with the exception of several years when we were up at 68 in 2001, and all the way to 2007 when it was 68 cents. And later on, that was decreased to 65 cents, 65 cents. It's been 65 cents for the last three years. Next. I would like to now go over other funds in a little bit more detail. Now, this is a public hearing. It's very likely, I don't know, Mayor and City Commissioners, that we may want to extend this particular public hearing for the, for next week. We are scheduled to have meetings on the budget, actually for this next month, I mean, next month, the 11th, and then there's other meetings following after that, before we approve the budget in September. So we've got plenty of time to look at it and make any changes as we go along. This is, let's go ahead and go to Fund 11. Fund 11, that's the Convention and Tourism Fund. This is something that, based on the item that was just tabled, obviously these numbers are going to change. We had set up this budget based on the recommendations of the Culture Affairs Committee. Obviously, these numbers will change, but this is the way it was recommended by the committee, and obviously, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and change these numbers. Fund 20 is just the, we do have some list purchases. It's a very minor fund. We have maintained some list purchases, payments that we, that we acquired, some equipment for public works in the landfill, and those are our annual payments. The money gets, comes in from a transfer from various funds. In this case, would be the landfill tipping fee. Next. Fund 21, again, this is based on a rate of 65418. That's something that we already covered in our PowerPoint. The 66 would be fund balance at the end of the year of 2, 501,587. Next. Fund 44, this is, the previous slide gives you a history of, you go back to the other one, gives you a history of various years in this particular fund going back to 2001. It's good to have comparisons of how we've done in the past, and this schedule obviously gives us that information. And let's go to the contents, please. This fund gets some of the, some of the landfill fees and FUMACF fees, as well as residential and commercial. Based on this, we are gonna have a fund balance at the end of the year.
What's a hotshot crew?
Those are, I guess, employee, they're--
It's public works.
Yeah, I know, it's public works, but they do some of the work on some of the streets. Are there anybody from public works here?
I just wonder what a hotshot crew is.
This is the crew we use for--
Huh?
This is the crew we use, for example, the tree spade, relocating trees, and also for sidewalks, et cetera, like that.
So like a downtown crew, Charlie?
Do they have special hats, a special group, elite?
You shouldn't be giving out any ideas, Mayor, but, no, we all try to wear the same consistent hat.
Next.
Pete, I'm sorry, go back--
Sure.
--to the same spreadsheet. Mutification, then it'll show any numbers there. I'm sorry.
That's no survey, the cuts that we are proposing based on the budget that we have right now.
Who's in that cut?
We, if you go back, we're having a major, go back to the general fund, please. Either we cut somewhere else or raise revenues.
See, I think the options are, you know, I just don't believe that we should be cutting--
Right now, Mayor, on that--
--the road from under these people, man. We've gotten through this rough time.
We show a deficit right now going into the year of 3,450,000.
Pete, we have had deficits since I came in. We've been balancing the budget with reserves since I came in.
This is our first public hearing, Mayor. We can certainly make changes as we go along. That's what we show right now.
Can you finish?
Pete, I see the number. Since you have, since you have zero for mutification, then what happens to the maintenance? Because part of the BBC's budget is, is, you know, I think it's over 100,000. It just goes to maintenance of it. So then, if taxes don't go up and it stays the same, then all those projects around town, they won't be, they won't be kept up with, I guess?
It's difficult right now, Commissioner.
No, no, Pete, what I'm asking is, if it's zero, then that means the maintenance of all those projects won't get looked at.
This is for the architect, landscape architect. That's the, what we used to fund from the Fund 44. Or, yeah, as we go along, there are--
I think what's gonna, what needs to be done here is that we need to give you all directions to what we, in order for you to plan. You can't plan when you don't know what the expectations are.
Right.
So I think what you're asking of us, this is what could happen, based on what's out there. But you're asking us, give me direction so I can start planning on how to get us there. Okay, so maybe we should have a workshop next week?
You can continue, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, there's, and there's a lot of requests that have come from department heads that are not being funded. There's--
Yeah, I understand.
--major problems in the maintenance of vehicles. We need more vehicles, Mayor and Commissioners, and obviously, we don't have the funds.
Commissioners, I think what we need to do is come together and give direction to the city manager and the finance department.
On the mutification, we put zero for now, and you're right, we can make adjustments. But it's important to understand that they have funding in place, and if, what we're doing is, if they have funding in place this year and they haven't finished their projects, we're gonna carry over that, some, that funding onto the next calendar year, until they, until they finish and accomplish the projects they have in the books now, and then we can do budget amendments to satisfy any financial needs that they may need in the future. But that's part of the reason that we're working with these numbers right now.
Our challenge is, I think we better come up with ideas, either user fees, or upgrade fees, or how to generate cash to offset our losses, or be efficient in areas that we can be efficient, save money, or like, for instance, through the courts, get manpower from the, from the judge for, to do tasks in the city.
A lot of what you're saying is already being done, Mayor, and getting community help and assistance and volunteerism is what makes this city go. Obviously, the judge does assign a lot of people to us to help with, they don't qualify for a lot of things. Labor and things like that, yes. Through our landfill, for example, we have tried everything we can to generate interest from neighboring cities, to bring in garbage, and that has been very successful. So we're doing that. As far as fees and things like that, we have been raising them over the years. We're probably at to the max in the majority of the fees, with the possible exception of the Health Department, for example. We're looking at those right now.
How about overtime?
We're at the bare minimum on overtime. The majority of our overtime is police and fire for emergency-type scenarios.
Is there something we can control there?
Well, we can't control, we can't control the natural disasters or crime and things like that. But yeah, the chiefs are working very hard with that. So obviously, we need to, we need to stop living beyond our means, and we're doing that. The issues are gonna be contractual agreements and things like that with police and fire, and we're holding the line. We're not giving our non-civilized employees any increases. We haven't last year nor this year, so.
Look, for instance, in bus, the national average is 7,000 miles breakdowns. I've heard that the breakdown here in Brownsville is 500, I mean, 5,000 miles, I mean, 500 miles instead of 7,000 is the national average. That shows we're spending a lot of money, and maybe we need to start looking at that, fleet the buses and do something about that because if we're breaking down every 500 hours--
The Commission--
--that means we're having to pay more.
The Commission has already approved the purchase of new buses. Buses are not purchased by going to Tipton or anywhere else and saying, "We need a bus." They're made and manufactured when you order it. So they start from zero. So it takes a long time to make a bus. But that's been done.
500 miles compared to 7,000. We spent a lot of money on maintenance. How about--
We spent a lot of money on the bus system, period.
Okay, I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I think we can do something to improve. Now, what about, what about the bridge tolls? Are we a cap there to where, if we go up a quarter, how will that impact our budget, or--
We're, as Pete mentioned earlier, our tolls at the bridge, and we only rely on tolls, half the toll at the Veterans Bridge. We don't make any money from the other bridges. That's down. We've gone and tested it. You know, I went, I drove across and drove back through the Veterans Bridge on Sunday--
It was 30 percent down.
--on Sunday, and there was nobody in front of me. I drove from one point, from point A to point B. So raising the tolls is fine, but if there's nobody utilizing the bridges, well--
Okay, if we use our reserves, let's say we maintain, if you've done everything you possibly can do--
I'm not, I'm not saying we have. I'm just saying we have everything we can think of with them.
Everything you can think of, and that's, so status quo, okay? Status quo. How much will you dig into our reserves if we keep status quo and fund these programs? We're going through a tough time, but we gotta go through it together. We need to survive. And that's what reserves are for. Now, how much is it gonna impact our reserves? Now, how much is it going to impact our reserves?
The, obviously, if our revenues continue to decline as they have in 2009, going to 2010, what's beyond that is anybody's guess. But remember, we will have enough reserves to carry us through to 2010. Beyond that, it's anybody's guess.
How about a combination of things? A penny on the taxes and some of the cuts we've done, like he's done, how would that impact the budget?
A penny will generate approximately $400,000 or a little bit less than $400,000, Mayor. So a penny brings a little bit of money into, in this case, will be to the general fund.
Would that say, that will help us save like the beautification and other programs?
We can certainly bring those expenditures back online.
Commissioner Somora. What percentage is recommended to keep in reserves of your total budget?
15%.
And how much do we have now?
Well, right now, based on the budget projections for 2009, it's 12%. But I, like I said earlier, we have so far through the year, for the next remaining two months, we are, it looks like we are going to spend less than what's in the budget. We're not going to receive what's in the budget as far as revenues, but we're going to have a decrease in expenses so that obviously increases our reserves at the end of the year.
I don't think we should be dipping into reserves to fund programs because those reserves are also there for emergency management situations. If a hurricane hits us, we dip into those reserves to sustain our staff, to make sure we get back to where we need to be after hurricane hits.
That's the case of a hurricane, but reserves are also to help us get through economic hard times.
But not to fund special programs.
Let me tell you, I was here, he can tell you, I was here when we had no reserves. We started with no, I think it was 53,000 in the fund balance, if you recall, if I recall right. And it takes time to build it up. But you build it up for, to have operations there when you need it. In this case, you have to make decisions, raise taxes, which I don't think the commission wants to do, cut back, which I don't think the commission wants to do, fire people, cut services, I don't think the commission wants to do. So we have the option of either going into a plan of getting through this hard time with assistance of reserves or a combination of doing some of these things and then raise taxes when better times are here, not right now, but better times are here. That could, that needs to be thought out. I was going to ask you, how many, like for instance, how many cell phones do we have? How many cell phones does the city have?
We can get that for you in our next meeting.
Maybe we need to cut back on that kind of stuff. Maybe we have too many temporarily for a year or something, I don't know.
We're doing audits as far as that goes, the cell phones, but we have a pool of minutes that allows us to have more cell phones than usual because we share minutes. And if, for example, I go over minutes, then the minutes that I go over are placed on another phone. So we have a system in place and we work with Sprint very closely to assure that we don't...
Yeah, but maybe we have too many cell phones, I don't know. You know, I'm just throwing this...
Through our purchasing department, we are doing an audit on all our cell phones and their use. And we do that every four months.
Vehicles.
Mr. Somora.
Yes?
Sure.
Mr. Resendez, can you get the microphone?
Call the microphone so they can hear you at home. Pray for us.
State your name, please, for the audience to...
Reverend Nellie Resendez, pleased to meet you, Mayor. The thing is, Mayor, that if this is open to the public, okay, and it's on the television and the people are watching you all, you know, maybe this should have been done on the back doors over there, these discussions that you all are having. Because the people, the public, they're interested in understanding, you're confusing everybody, you know? The public would like to know, how is it going to affect the households? How is it going to affect me? And I'm confused because, I mean, this is a lot of stuff you guys got there and most of the people in Brownsville are watching you all, you know, and you're discussing, "We have cell phones." How many cell phones do we have? People don't care how many cell phones you have. People want to know if they're going to raise the taxes or how is it going to affect the households? Can you tell the people how is it going to affect households this year or what's the rate that you've been going every year up and up and up? Because with those tabulations, it's wonderful for you all, but most common people, common people would like to know if it's going to affect us? Are you going to raise it one penny, two penny, what's going to happen?
Mr. Resendez, this is a public hearing. This is the purpose of the hearing to discuss openly...
I understand.
So the citizens of Brownsville know that we're asking the questions, maybe to you it's silly or you don't want to know, but we're asking the questions through the process.
But wait a minute, you just offended me that I don't want to know? Why do you think I'm here for? To look at you because you're pretty or something?
People need to know how difficult it is. People need to know what the challenges are. You may not be interested, but others are. Okay, go ahead. So I mean, city manager, those are some of the things I think we need to come back and discuss or maybe raise some fees some places that haven't been raised, I don't know.
For Dora Cameron, and I wanted to clarify, the beautification projects have not been eliminated from the budget. It's a profession that works with them, that we're going to be working with. So when they have a project and they need a viable professional, then we can work with that. Either we find funding or they utilize the funding that they've been given. But these are things we're monitoring and we can work with.
Commissioner Trane is looking at this.
Charlie, can you clarify that? Because I think that there might be some confusion. You're saying that the professional for the beautification has been eliminated. So the professional, you're talking about the landscape architect?
Right.
Okay, but you're saying that there is already a line item in the budget for beautification projects?
There will be. Funding for beautification was not cut. What you saw here was the architect being...
Okay, but that's not designated on the slide. It just says beautification. It doesn't say that SSP has been cut or whoever the architect would be.
I understand that. That's why I'm trying to clarify that.
Okay.
But isn't the beautification committee in charge of that? They oversee that, makes that recommendation?
Well, they...
They bring that to the commission.
They bring that to the commission as far as what the viable projects are going to be.
No, but I mean, you're talking about the architect specifically.
Right, right.
They hired the architect, not the city commission.
The city commission approves...
City commission approves all aspects of the beautification.
That's what I'm saying, okay. That was their recommendation to you to do away with that?
Not at all.
We're going to go through some very difficult times.
So I think we're circumventing the process here. We need to work with the beautification committee.
Let's face it.
They need to be here. I bet you they don't realize what's being proposed right now. If they did, they would be here right now.
No, well, they were made aware of it, Mayor. And I'm not just saying, you know, because I sit on the committee and that I wanted to be, you know, fully informed, Pete, and I want to clarify what I'm asking. If there's cuts that need to be made, I understand it. And when I saw that just had zero, well then, you know, that was my question, but there's need, cuts need to be made. I understand, you know, obviously, we live in tough times. We want to, you know, for example, the city employees, they haven't had the living wage increase, you know, from a year ago. I think everybody wants to see them have a 3% this coming year. Can we make that happen? I don't know. But those are things I'd like to see we work towards and see how we're going to be able to make it happen.
Based on the budget that we're working on, commissioners and Mayor, it's been very difficult. This has been a very difficult task. And it's very difficult when you don't have the funding sources to provide for these expenses.
Let me take you back to where I was the only one to propose three cents when times were good. If we had accepted the three cents, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now. That's, we lost a lot of money in those, when the times were good, that was the time to raise the taxes. Times were bad, you can't do that now. So you have to cut back services, you have to cut back personnel, you have to cut back, you know, like you say, holding the line or cut back funding. And I don't want to do that, but we're here because we wouldn't do what I thought was the right thing two years ago, a year ago.
Go on. Okay. Why don't you stop some of the travel? Every time we look at our agenda, there's 40 people traveling. Why don't we cut that in half? The total sum of travel for the city last year was $100,000, the total sum. The majority of the travel that you see there and the majority of the travel that's on there is usually police and fire, bus and things like that that are covered by grants or other agencies. So yes, we have seen and looked to see we want to cut office supplies. That's just a drop in the bucket. $130,000, $40,000 in office supplies, $100,000 in travel that comes from our general fund. The rest of the travel is travel that is paid for by other types of funding.
We're down to the bone, you're saying. Go on, Pete, unless the commission has something else to say or ask a question now? Okay, go on.
This is airport. In 2009, we didn't have a transfer from the general fund because of some building sales. Go back to the, go back to the other schedule that we had.
Was that the Hager or Levi's building?
The, I forget.
One more Hager.
Okay, BMW.
Did that go with the land, too?
And again, in the airport, any, it has a subsidy from the general fund. We do have a fire department that obviously mans the airport and the majority, some of that is from the fire department. Anyway, what is our transfer for the year?
Transfer?
Okay, the transfer is $1,425,000. It's a subsidy that's going to come in from the general fund, $1,425,000. Next. Bridge fund, 1.5. At one time, we were getting 2.5 million, now we're at 1.5. So that's a huge decrease from the crossings at our Veterans Bridge. As you can see, some of that history of, in 2004, we had $2,457,000, very consistent, $2,496,000, $2,903,000 in 2006, $2,716,000 in 2007, $2,310,000. The budget for 2009 is way overstated because we are going to, once all the numbers come in, it'll be 1.5 million. And so we are just going a little bit above for 2010. This is just the parking meter. It's not even going to go into it because it's balanced. Next. Our bus, let's go to the history. Looking at the revenues, operating revenues for bus, obviously, they are increasing every year, but so are the expenses. Want to go down on the expenses?
When's the last time they had a fee increase at bus?
Norma, are you here?
It's been five, six years? Or maybe we need to visit that, you know?
You want to move over? Mayor, when you mentioned increasing the fares on bus, I mean, Norma, I think if you produce, the people that ride the bus are, a majority of them are the elderly. You know, the last thing I hate to see is, you know, they're standing outside the mall and you see these elderly individuals. There's no bus shelter, for example, where the old, where the Circuit City was on, near Publicisal. Two older ladies on the weekend, standing there waiting for the bus. I hate to see that, you know, yet they're the ones that are riding the bus and then we're going to try to raise fees on them.
Yeah, but we don't want to go out of business either.
We don't want to go out of business either. But again, I, you know, I don't know that's the right direction.
What's the fare rate now for bus?
The fare rate for, we have several fare rates and the general fare is a dollar.
So for a dollar, you can ride a good long distance?
For a dollar, and it's a dollar for a one-way trip. But if you want to transfer, it's 25 cents to transfer and it's a one-way trip.
So let's say a cab fare. What would a cab fare cost you compared to that same dollar that you're in that's?
I mean, the cab fare, it depends on the distance that you're going, so...
You say an average, what, $10?
It could be anywhere from $3 or $4 to $10, $15, depending on where you go. I mean, if you go to the island, it's even going to be more than that, maybe almost $50.
How much do churches go to the island?
Forty?
Forty-five? How much?
Well, we are coordinating with the real transit to provide rights to the island.
And how much is that?
There's a, I think it's for a total of $3 and a couple of transfers you're able to get from Brownsville to South Padre Island. Got to understand that the people that are using our service are the people that most need the service. You're talking about inmates, talking about the gardeners, you know, so you would be taxing the lowest...
How's it look like the federal grants for 2010 for a bus?
Our federal fundings are very healthy. What we are lacking is the local money to leverage those federal dollars down. So in order to be able to utilize those federal dollars, you need to have the local match to bring them down.
And you get that from the revenues?
We get some of that from the fare box revenue. We have advertising revenue. We have, you know, we try to, the general fund kicks in, the state also gives us some local match.
So dollar for dollar, what do we get?
Well, on operating is 50/50. It's a dollar for every dollar. On capital, it's 80/20, 83/17, depending on the items that you're getting, the capital that you're buying.
Okay, and how does legislation, the census look for our funding? How's it going to affect us in 2010 for the federal grants?
Well, we're looking at that. The funding will not change. What will change would be our ability to spend the money for operating. We will still be getting the same level of funding, but we are trying to change the guideline to allow us to use the money as we need locally. Because at the, once we exceed the 200,000 population threshold, the guidelines stipulate that you can only use the money for capital and planning. So that means you will not be able to pay for bus drivers. But you could buy buses, but you don't, you can't pay for the bus driver.
One last question before I give it to Commissioner Gallin. How much are we subsidizing bus, subsidizing bus?
The city? The city's local match is very minimal.
Right now, the general fund transfer would be $1,200,000.
$1,200,000, okay.
But, yeah, and you can see the history of the general cash transfer.
That's for operating only.
Just for operating only and...
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, 1.2.
1.2. But as you can see, that for fiscal year 08, we had, we came in and the city only contribution was $972,000. That was the city's local contribution for, that was the actual, so we might, key is budgeting 1.2, but we couldn't necessarily come in under that and we historically come in under what the general fund has budgeted.
Commissioner Gallin?
This is not specifically for Norma, but Pete and Charlie, am I right in assuming that more grant money, both private and government, would help this situation?
Yes.
So Ben, if I could ask you, the dedicated grant team that you're getting started for the stimulus money, is it possible that that would help this situation? It would. So I think, I think I would advocate long-range planning, including a more active dedicated grant team to be more aggressive about those funds.
What we need to understand about the general, our fund is that the majority of our general fund, of the general fund, the majority of the budget is a glorified payroll and, you know, we're not, we're not using much grant money to pay employees other than at Ben's place.
But grant money could...
So if we can, if we can reduce some of that and we do find, and I don't know if we have any stimulus money on record right now that would pay employees, but that's where our issues are in...
Well, I think we never want to turn down grant money.
Never, never.
But grant money can be used to, for infrastructure or other items that can then free that money up for paying employees, right?
Well, we're not using much general fund for infrastructure work right now, but yes, you're right. We need, we need to get any and all funding possible and we have taken a proactive approach. I think the majority of the, of the heavy purchase items or activity that the city's done in the last five or six months has been... the city's done in the last five or six months has been from grant money. All the projects that y'all have proved recently, the majority of have been grant money or federal funds that have been awarded to the city. And, and we really do want to work on that and enhance that. We don't want to lose, we don't want to lose sight of, of what the stimulus packages are co, are, are offering for our city.
Not your stimulus package, but...
Any and all grants.
Many, um...
And we're working with the state and text out and everybody else to try to get our fair share of, of funding for streets, infrastructure work.
Many, many indicators prove that we're not doing a good job with private funding. Government funding is one thing, but private foundation money.
And that, that's one of the assignments that Jeff Johnson, whatever assistance has, and, uh, and Ben have, is to, uh, find additional resources and, and, and expertise in the grant writing field to get as much funding as possible to the city. And talking to these young men and women that have done these researches that are coming back and saying that, um, we're, we're not, we're not there yet, would be, would be great too.
Okay, uh, you want to continue? Continue, Pete?
Yeah, the other one is the golf center fund. We are going to, uh, let's look at the transfer order here. Four hundred and, four hundred and ten thousand, as, as the same as fiscal year two thousand nine. Uh, you want to go down, please? Uh, and we're still showing a deficit of sixteen thousand, which is a small amount. Again, this is just an estimate. Okay, let's go to the, uh, total. This is the, um, the budget for all the, all the funds, a hundred and twenty million in, in revenues, and expenses of, of a hundred and twenty-five million. So we are, right now, we still need to make more cuts.
Is that what the proposed cuts you had up there?
Yes. It's, it's merit, this is, is not going to be a good year. And remember, the majority of the expenses are in personnel. Go up, please. The sales tax is about twenty percent of the overall city budget, uh, property tax being our, our largest funding source of twenty-nine percent. And I guess the third one would be, the, second would be fees and services. Really, that concludes, uh, my presentation, but we will continue between now and September, and looking at every, every raw funding source, every expenditure. Yes, sir?
Can you go down to the bottom, I didn't see the, uh... So your estimated fund balance is eleven, eleven-seven?
That's combining all the funds.
All funds?
All funds.
With expenditure, total expenditure, so a hundred and twenty-five million?
Correct. And if we increase expenses, or we come up with other programs, and that number's going to grow up, go, and then, of course, we need to increase revenues to cover any additional expenses.
And that would put you at twelve percent?
Right now, we're sitting below twelve percent, the general fund. When, when we, when we visited, or we get raided by, uh, the bonds...
But I guess my question is, would that put you at twelve percent, or would you be lower than twelve percent?
That's below, that's below twelve percent.
Neither.
Yeah, around there. We just don't hear it up there, but it's around that.
A question, Commissioner Eggers. We always bring this up, P, this, the PUB transfer. I know it's ten percent. Why can't we move it to fifteen percent and use that five percent for, for safety and the arts and other projects that we had talked about the last few years? Why, why is that almost impossible to do based on what I hear from PUB, that it'd be hard to do that? You know, we, we're funding all these museums with electricity, all that electricity, the city's coming back and paying for all that. How, why can't PUB say, look, we'll, we'll pay the utilities for all the museums? I mean, we, we're paying it anyway.
Commissioner Eggers, one of the things that we may be able to do is look at our utility expenses and maybe cut back, turn off those switches at night, and, uh, five percent would maybe generate an additional savings for us because the, uh, when the transfer is calculated, you take the gross revenues minus all the fuel costs, minus the expenses for the South West Regional Water Authority, and you have come up with a, a net gross, gross, you take ten percent of that, the PUB takes, well, we take ten percent of those gross, and then they deduct the utility usage. So if we can reduce the utility usage, then we can get a higher transfer. Uh, going back to your question about the ten, fifteen percent, that's written in the bond covenants, uh, when the bonds for PUB were sold, that we would retain ten percent of the gross revenues. So that, to me, would be a bond counsel, uh, opinion, um, but, uh, that's all I can tell you right now.
But if we increase the transfer, is there a potential for rates to increase for them to make up for that revenue?
First of all, you can't do it without calling in all the bonds, and it would be very expensive, because based on charter, the transfer is fixed, that's what it is now. So we can't, I mean, we just can't even do it, I don't, we shouldn't even be talking about it unless we're going to do it, and, and to do it would be very costly, because we have to call in the bonds, so it's a mood issue, really.
Commissioner Samot, I want to make sure I, I understand your question. If you raise rates for the PUB customers? Oh, okay.
It's a mood issue, really. Okay, uh, any other questions? Well, to me, I think we need to look for maybe innovative ways as to how we can increase our cash. Uh, and it may be a combination of things, maybe one penny, I mean, I, one penny isn't very much, if that's, would be something worth considering, but at the same time, um, finding ways to be more efficient, like you said, wherever we can, okay? That's another way. Uh, increase, uh, fees where, you know, if it's been six years since we increased bus, yeah, the poor has to pay something back into the system, because if not, there's not going to be a system for them to use. You know, we'll go broke. That'd be one, one, another thing. People need to share the burden. Uh, the other thing is, uh, like, for instance, the weedy lots that came here before us, uh, yes, you would have to, my, my idea is hiring another attorney that focuses just on the collections, because if we were paying another attorney outside and he was making money, it was a lucrative business for him, why can't it be a lucrative business for us to stay on top of, of collection of the, of the weedy lots and stuff like that, and it pay for itself and make money? Or, uh, perhaps, uh, instead of issuing permits for bars further up north, let's, let's, let's create an entertainment district down, down to where we restrict the permits that were, any future bars, they will have to be downtown, to where we're creating a, an entertainment district here to where sales taxes will be improved. I mean, I think we need to think innovatively for ways of how to improve our community. And these are, I'm not saying this is the way to do it, I'm just saying, this is maybe a way to consider. The animal shelter, if we do more spay and neuter and charge, uh, but they need an assistant to where we could do that, to where it would pay for itself, it would license more people and, and bring in more revenues. I don't know, those are the things, I think. Um, any other, anything, anything else? Uh, I'm sorry, Pastor, I didn't mean to ignore you. A passive collection play for the city, that'd be great.
There we go. I just wanted to mention that, uh, like, like one of the commissioners mentioned, the people that are riding the buses, uh, taxis are not an option for those people, uh, but if fuel keeps going up like they say it's going to, the ridership is going to increase just because they won't be able to afford the gasoline, and if the ridership increases, uh, that will help your, your funding. Uh, if you raise the rates, though, you, you're just going to keep people from getting to work and being able to...
Yeah, but a dollar?
For those people...
But what happens if we can't carry the, the load anymore and we, we're one of the few cities that has its own bus, uh, transit system? One of the very few cities.
It's, it's the largest city in the Rio Grande Valley.
So do we do away with the system because we can't afford it later on?
I'm just saying, let's keep looking for innovative, whether it's grants, whether it's, uh...
Nobody, you see, nobody likes paying their share, nobody likes paying, nobody, nobody wants to pay nothing. No, please, all free.
Mayor, I think the people do pay, you know, and I think those that can, those that have a limited income, maybe a hundred bucks a month to survive on food and, you know, pay for the, the Medicare and all, pay for their medicines. I mean, you know what, we don't know how it is to live like that. I know, I don't, and it's unfortunate that all they need to do is pay that one dollar to get on the bus, to go to the grocery store, go to their doctor's visit. It's unfair to think that they don't want to pay. They have paid, they paid too much.
I have them calling me, I have them calling me for rides because they don't have the, the dollar or dollar and a quarter for the bus.
They're right, we should, maybe we should...
So, uh, you know, I, I don't know how they're going to get where they're going, but some of them don't make it to work because they don't have that dollar, or dollar and a quarter, whatever it takes, and I'd hate to see that. You, you mentioned the animal shelter, I was told today that they're, they're booked up for spading and neutering, uh, after all the attention on that, and I, I'm not sure if that's a money source, if, if they hire another assistant, but that's, that's another option or a possibility to look at, so...
Can I say something quick?
Commissioner Eggers?
And I want to throw this out, and it might be shot down, but GBIC, they have a balance of twenty million dollars right now. You know, this is a, this is a, a non-profit corporation.
What balance, twenty million?
They have about twenty million dollars in their...
Capacity to sell bonds?
No, 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 they have, they haven't made any major, major, uh, investments in any corporation that have come down. They're, they're out, basically what I talked to you by, by one of the board members, it's up to like close to twenty million dollars that they have, because they haven't done anything. They really haven't invested in, what I'm saying is, shouldn't we cap them out like at, if say they, maybe they're at fifteen, but shouldn't we cap them like at eight million and whatever they don't invest in or do, bring it back to the city, city fund balance, general fund?
That's, that's a tax be generated for specific use.
Yeah, it's for economic...
Yeah, but if it's not being used, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it's not being used, and they haven't invested in anything in the last five years, not money's just...
It came down to the budget of them, we can't, we can't, there's restrictions to that money.
That's what I'm saying, we couldn't be done in drastic measures, if we're going to, I'd rather take from them than fire employees.
Commissioner Gallin?
I don't think that, uh, we're going to solve it tonight. I also don't think we're going to solve it by looking at today, we need to look more long-term, that was the whole point of long-range planning, and maybe we should consider having a budget summit that looks long-term and evaluates and prioritizes so that we can have the funds for economic development, which we all know is the only way that we're going to get anywhere in the long run.
Okay, so right now, what I'm hearing is, don't do nothing. That's what I'm hearing, don't do nothing. I mean, yeah, we can speculate, we can wish, but we're not, we're not giving him any guidance of where we want to go, so he can't plan. You can't even plan short-term for this next year, unless he gets, unless he gets some kind of guidance. Are we willing to raise one cent? We're not. Are we willing to increase fees? We're not.
Mayor, this is the first...
So what are we willing to do?
Mayor, this is the first public hearing. Uh, it's not going to get solved here, you know, here in the, you know, in an hour that we've been going at it. I mean, like I said, I think a lot of suggestions have been made, I think Dr. Gallin's correct, I mean, you know, we want to, it all goes back to, imagine Brownsville, whether you liked it or you did not, you know, there was very specific things in there that have said, you know what, you got to think down the road, and how, what would those projections be? The economic development, yes, do we want to get these major companies or research companies to come down and invest in Brownsville? We do. It's about putting it all into, in perspective, but again, I disagree, if you think that the commission wants to do nothing, you know, it's not an action item, Mayor.
Imagine Brownsville's not in balance this budget here today or this year.
And we're not going to do that either.
Oh, no, but we need to give some, some kind of guidance to them, but y'all don't want to, that's fine.
No one said that.
Okay, we're not doing it tonight, we're not doing it tonight. Is there anything else?
Mayor, I would recommend if, maybe someone can make a motion to continue this public hearing for next...
Wait, give us a date.
For next, next, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, okay.
With a continue.
Can we have a motion to continue the public hearing? We have a motion by Commissioner Troyani, can we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. Uh, all in favor to continue to next Tuesday? What time? Six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Six o'clock.
Next Tuesday, six o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero twenty-four, to rezone from dwelling Z to professional offices Z to prof, on two point one-five acres for proposed lot one and two of MJK number two subdivision located near FM eight oh-two and South San Marcelo Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor, if, uh, City Commissioner, can we get the two items, we can take care of them all at once?
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero twenty-four dash S A, to allow medium retail-specific use in a professional office area for one point five-eight acres of proposed lot one of MJK two thou, number two subdivision located near FM eight oh-two and South San Marcelo Boulevard. Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero twenty-four dash S B, to allow medium retail-specific use in a professional office area for point fifty-seven acres for proposed lot two of MJK number two subdivision located near eight oh-two and South San Marcelo Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner, um, as you recall, we had the first public hearing on this case, on these three cases last week, but after the, uh, public hearing last week, the, uh, neighbors, uh, the Reed family approached our department along with the developer, uh, Mr. Bernard, and we have formally consensus that we would present this case back to you tonight, uh, with some conditions. The, the family was a little bit concerned that our conditions in the, in the case were a little bit vague. If you recall, the, uh, the, uh, the property is right here in San Marcelo and, and eight oh-two and Coffey Port. Um, if, I'm just going to go into the, uh, into the conditions that the developer and the, uh, the, uh, neighbors have, have, and the city have, have agreed on, uh, as presentation for you tonight, to add onto this, uh, as conditions onto this ordinance. And as requirements by the City of Brownsville, uh, the existing no-truck route on Coffey Port, uh, will remain and will be appropriately posted.
It already is, isn't it? There's no truck allowed?
Right, there's a truck route, but it will remain, and a sign will be posted on the intersection of the eastbound Coffey Port Road. Uh, construction of Coffey Port Road improvements according to a, a, a letter sent to the Reeds by Mr. Cabler, uh, July the ninth, two thousand nine, will be attached as part of the condition. The developers' requirements shall be, uh, to construct a nine-foot, uh, brick-stucco privacy wall in the rear of lot one and two according to the PLO one, which is, uh, is a, an exhibit that, now we could probably show on the, on the, on the screen, and exhibit number two, uh, or PLO two, um, of a landscape master plan, uh, dated August the third, two thousand nine. Uh, the developers shall construct a seven-foot brick-stucco privacy wall on the north side of lot three, of lot five, according to, uh, PLO one and PLO two, uh, also on the landscape master plan dated August the third. Developers shall install and enhance an irrigated landscaping wall, irrigated landscaping and visual barrier between adjacent property owners, residents, and the proposed lot five of the residential subdivision to the west and otherwise installs the landscaping elements as shown on PLO one through PLO five, the landscape master plan dated August the third, which is exhibit B. The developers should also bury all electrical service lines, um, um, and the landscaping shall be maintained by the subdivision homeowners association, and, and as you can see here, there is a colored rendering of the site plan, uh, this landscaping here, buffer zones will all be maintained by this association when it's developed, and here, the walls here, uh, that I talked about, and these are the barriers, uh, as shown in the master plan, uh, the gated, uh, that goes into the, the residential part of the project. Trucks will not be allowed to make deliveries to lot one, which is the CVS Pharmacy, here, um, between nine PM and six AM. Trucks will not be left at an idle while unloading at the CVS, uh, and CVS trucks will be instructed to use Coffey Port Road as depicted on the truck route, uh, which is also attached here. Uh, developers will install subdued lighting to minimize light pollution of the adjacent properties and neighborhood as set in a letter from, uh, Mr. Noe Puga, our zoning and plan administrator. Uh, the City of Brownsville, uh, will attach that letter here as, also as an exhibit. Uh, signage for lot one shall be as, as shown in the site plan, and there's also the, uh, renderings of the signs for CVS Pharmacy. Developers agree not to seek rezoning of lot three... the signs for CVS Pharmacy. Developers agree not to seek rezoning of lots three, four, and five for a period of ten years from the date of this ordinance without consent of the owners of the adjacent property, of, without consent of the adjacent property owner's property. This property shall be memorized in the deed records of Cameron County, which these lots here will remain residential for ten years. The developers shall, the developers shall provide adjacent property owners with the courtesy copy of the final ready-to-bid construction plans in sufficient time for the adjacent property owners to review and comment on the consistency of those plans with this, with the, with the special use permit before the issuance of the building permit. And, and this is what the developers, the attorney for the Reed family, and city staff agree on to, with this ordinance, to remit as latest today. And I believe the attorney for the Reeds is here, the developers here. You all have any questions? This is public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Anybody have anything to say for or against? Please state your name, for the record and for the audience to know who's the speaker.
Jimmy Bernard, representing Coastal Realty, M&amp;J Development, and First Hartford Development, who builds for CVS Pharmacy. We've worked with the Reed family and Mr. Dan Remfro, the attorney for the Reed family, to come up with this design that would have as little impact on the residential area as possible. And we're all in agreement that all of these items will be done. Ask for your approval of this.
Thank you. Is there anybody against it here? There's nobody against it? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Dan Remfro, thank you for your time. Commissioners, I'm here for the adjacent property owners. And I mainly want to commend your, your planning department. We've worked very hard on this. I think it's important to remember that when these homes were built, eight oh two was not even there. And so, these homes have been there for many years, and I believe this is good compromise that gives them the residential character to the extent it can be preserved. It doesn't put a burden on the city. The developer has agreed to make these changes. And with the section two of the two special use ordinances, which reflect the conditions, the neighbors endorse the ordinance.
Yeah, there's no opposition clearly here to it, so, thank you. This is a public hearing. No, nobody against it? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
With a close.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Trani. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion?
I have a question.
All of, okay.
Ben Medina, before again, Joe Wallace in here again on the no truck entrance. Of course, there will be, have to make, an exception made to deliveries that are going in there with the trucks, no?
They'll have to come in eight oh two.
No, because the. From eight oh two, but they're gonna come on Coffeeport.
The, the trucks will enter through eight oh two on to CVS Pharmacy and will exit to San Marcelo.
Okay, so there won't actually be any contact with Coffeeport?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
With a proof?
Well, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, I call for a motion to approve or disapprove, okay. Commissioner Aguirre makes a motion. Can I have a second?
To approve both items, nine and ten, correct?
Both nine and ten. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one?
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading.
Item eleven, no?
We did nine, ten, and eleven altogether. Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero six oh one dash CU to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol for lots six through eight block double A out of Brownsville Land Improvement Company subdivision located at nineteen twenty-five Central Boulevard, Brownsville, Texas.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this is a special use to allow a wet restaurant. Here's the property shaded in red, this is Central Boulevard, Stovall, Los Ebenos. This is an existing facility. It's vacant. They would want to have a restaurant here in your package. They have an elaborate plan of.
Is that Midias Restaurant?
No, no, it's not. And, and there's a picture on the.
Ah, that's further.
It's a yellow building, a lot of vegetation.
It's been adult daycare, right?
Yes, adult daycare. They have a good concept plan. The planservin' commission will be announced to approve this application. It's a wet restaurant. I believe the applicant is here.
This is a public hearing? Anybody for or against? Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Aye.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Mark Bernard, I live next door to the site on Stovall Road, it's the backside of this. This is the tropical nursery site?
Yes, it was one time.
Yeah, on Central Boulevard.
Yeah, it's got that slope.
Yeah. I'm at the back end of that, and my only concern is, is down the road for years, there's been a, a night bar that plays music outside, and we can hear it from my house all the way down to, almost at Price Road. I just have a question. Are they gonna have outside music in, what are their hours are gonna be?
Bless you.
Bless you. I have no clue. Somebody from permitting can come up here and address that?
The applicant is here.
Oh, the applicant's here.
My nombre es Vicente Rocha, y realmente nosotros no vamos a tener música fuera. Es solamente un área para estar disfrutando del aire, estar acompañados ahí como descansando. Es un lounge area que vamos a poner ahí. No va a tener música.
Did you understand that, Mark?
Not all.
He said no. It's gonna be a lounge area, no music.
The exterior, he's not gonna make use of any of the exterior?
No, that's not what he said.
The patio area?
The patio area is, what, what'd you say? The patio area is the lounge.
It's gonna be, are they gonna enclose it?
No.
No, no.
They want to enjoy the night air.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a lounge.
They just want to enjoy the air, the fresh air.
They want to smoke out there.
They're gonna smoke?
Yeah.
No, I don't want them to do that. I don't mind them smoking. It'll travel straight to your house. They're not gonna have music at the lounge outside?
You might want to clarify between piped in and live.
It's got an approval, that's what you do.
Do what?
I mean, if he's gonna have ambiance music, because he's gonna have ambiance music, but he said he doesn't, he's not gonna have live.
No, no bands?
He did, he said.
Or you could have a DJ.
What are, what are his hours?
Yeah, Rick.
Come on, guys, this, this, one at a time.
I know, I understand, but, Mayor, this is important.
Yes, it is.
The, the area here that they're gonna park back in the back, are they gonna fill that in?
No.
They're gonna, on the low level?
It'll, there's parking there.
No, there's parking here. See, here's the existing building right here. Here's the existing parking. This is high parking. This is low parking. This is a ditch area here. And this is low area here that floods when we have hi, lots of rain. We already have some problems back here with a, a person that bought the old Springman King property, and he's filling that in. And I've been trying to keep the engineering department on top of that. And it's gonna cause problems back in the Honeydale area and back in another subdivision back behind us.
And there's been drainage problems right there when the, they throw baskets to there and it clogs the drain.
Yeah, I had it cleaned up recently. We just, we just did a whole cleaning of this ditch area. The, I'm okay with this project if I understand that they're not gonna go fill in all this in, which creates additional drainage issues. And number two, that their hours are reasonable and they're not having loud music.
On the, on the site plan, Mr. Bernard, they will, they want to keep all the vegetation that's on the site, everything that's existing, that you realize the existing building for the restaurant and lounge. The hours in their narrative is from eleven AM to two AM.
Not bad, Commissioner. We won't, we can go to bed after two. This part, this will be new parking area back here. How, how?
It's all existing.
No, sir. That's grass area right there. I'm very familiar with that property. Commissioner Longoria.
Ben, he is applying, his address is on Central Boulevard, which is a commercial, and does provide for this. He does have greenage, which does provide a buffer to some extent. There is no business, to my understanding, on Central Boulevard that would not be granted in after-hours license all the way to two o'clock. I understand your issue as a resident and as somebody that lives immediately behind.
Mayor.
Correct, behind the area of the, on Stovall. But in essence, this is a commercial business that's coming in, into Central Boulevard, using Central Boulevard as its address, thus complying with TABC, complying with the state, and complying with the city regulations.
Just gonna make parking like that.
Thank you.
Can I be a.
Commissioner Trani?
I guess my concern is the drainage issue. And if he's saying that he's not going to fill these things in, I'd like that in writing, because you are gonna have flooding issues back along Ebony and all, all that. And then you've also got the neighborhood in the back. So if we can ensure that there's a buffer, and we can ensure based on what his representations are, because when he said they're gonna enjoy the, the night air, well, I mean, that's a very wide, wide parameter. So if we can get some, you know, idea of what they're gonna do.
Alcohol?
The zoning, the zoning's okay already. They're just looking for the wet.
The wet.
I guess my concern is the drainage issue, and, and how much of that are they gonna, if they're gonna fill anything in, if they're gonna enlarge the parking lot, whether they're gonna cause a drainage problem. And then also, what kind of buffer and how, how much of a buffer are you gonna have?
Commissioner, you can state those as conditions to this application, that the vegetation will be as is or enhanced, and that no parking in the rear will ever be constructed. So if you can add those to it.
Are we giving, are we giving them incentive to maybe relocate to the downtown area and open the bar there?
We don't.
Do we offer incentives like that?
No, we don't.
Well, if you've been to McAllen, it's taken off. It's taken off over there.
But I don't think he owns a piece of property in downtown. Unless he wants to buy one, we're selling property now.
We are in the infancy of initiating a downtown entertainment area. We, we haven't started that. We can't tell people that they can't open up a location.
Have we offered them?
No, we haven't. We, we haven't started that yet. But it's a good idea.
Before we get to the infancy, the city commission's gotta come together and agree to all this stuff. Okay, let's get back on the subject matter here. Mr. Bernard, you want to continue?
I'm okay if we can implement those conditions.
Well, I don't think they can make any change without getting a permit from engineering, no.
You can request the changes for months.
Yeah, but you need to impose, if you want more conditions.
If we want additional conditions, we do it now or later.
You can do it now, okay. But let's make that a requirement. They, they, they need to be subject to approval by the city based on engineering approval and all that stuff, whatever it is.
Well, but he was dealing with the.
His concern was drainage and his, and the impact of the landscape.
We can authorize, we can let the, I'm sorry.
But he has property rights, and I think if he qualifies and is done in a responsible way to where it doesn't flood, he should be allowed to do what he wants to do with his property, providing he complies.
May I have the floor?
Commissioner Trani?
Thank you.
You want to say?
Basically, my, my thought is that we can authorize him to go forward with his project as long as we put on there as a condition that he not change the drainage pattern and that he has an enhanced buffer in that area. And he can proceed with his restaurant. We can authorize the restaurant. He can have his project, and we can protect the neighborhood in the back. And we can do this today instead of tabling it.
Right. With a close, man?
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo. We have a second by Commissioner Trani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
I would move to approve, and I would ask that it include the drainage provisions, that he not change the drainage structure of the lot, and that he have an enhanced buffer for sound.
Enhancing what matter?
I think it was vegetation is what, what he has at this point.
Just trees.
Doesn't he have a lot of vegetation there?
He's got, and he's got vegetation in the back.
That should be fine. Okay, we have a motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Entendió lo que se aprobó? Por miente que mantienen la vegetación atrás, okay? Eso va a servir como para.
De hecho, hay muchas.
Es lo que quiere que se mantenga, y no se cambie el drenaje de la propiedad.
No, de hecho, es un castigo.
Okay, okay. No más que ya está seguro que ustedes entendieron. Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Mayor, real quick, I just want to say hello to Mr. Batzel, who's here. He's a longtime resident of Brownsville, has done a lot for our community.
He's an icon.
Just want to say hello.
Mr. Batzel, thank you. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash six oh two dash CU to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol for lot five of block one out of Rose Garden subdivision located at forty-two fifty-five, Old Highway seventy-seven in Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this is another conditional use permit. This one's an old seventy-seven highway. It's, here it is, and this is the expressway. Academy is here, the bank right here. This is a restaurant, also a wet restaurant. The planservin' commission will be announced to recommend this application to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody for or against?
The applicant is here.
Okay.
Just threw a little bit what you.
Thanks, sir.
Staff recommendations to approve, Ben? Okay.
Sorry.
Staff has recommended to approve. Are you against this?
No.
Okay, well then, is there anybody against this? Let me ask you, is there anybody against this? No. We have a motion to close by Commissioner Aguirre.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, this is an action item. Motion to approve by Commissioner Aguirre, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next item?
Item fourteen, public comment period.
Item fourteen, public comments. Who do we have?
Roman Perez.
Who, Roman Perez?
Roman Perez.
I don't have that here, so I'll rely on you. I'll rely on you. Roman Perez, how many do we have? It's a long night. How many do we have?
What's wrong with them?
Go ahead, you got three minutes, Mr. Perez.
I'll make it quick. I know it's a long night. I think the over-under from some of us was ten o'clock, so I don't know if we're gonna get there or not. I wanted to come by because last meeting, July twenty-first, you all passed the Imagine Brownsville act, final plan as a form of a use, land use plan and a comprehensive plan. When you all passed it, I was a little bit disturbed with the fact that the Imagine Brownsville plan wasn't included in your backup material. This has been a good city when it comes to doing, putting enough information in the backup for you all to have. In fact, I noticed in today's item, in today's agenda, there's at least two items on the agenda in which there is no backup material. It's just a sheet of paper saying, we're gonna be discussing this. There needs to be a consistent, consistency with the city commission with regards to putting backup material on the agenda and being put in seventy-two hours before a city commission meeting, so you all can have more than just a couple days to look at something or find out about something. And with regards to this, I, I took it upon myself to, to find out whether or not there needed to be a, a public hearing for the Imagine Brownsville action plan. The, the problem with the, that the public hearing, my problem was, is that we have public hearings for really, really small things that affect small properties, but we didn't have a public hearing with regards to a ten-year plan. And I looked, I looked at the government, local government code. There's a chapter two thirteen point zero zero three in reference to a comprehensive plan, and it states that you almost have to have an ordinance. And unfortunately, the Imagine Brownsville plan did not have an ordinance. And there's, I, I called about twenty different cities throughout the state, whether they had about maybe fifteen hundred people in that city, or the city the size of San Antonio. And they all generally had the same idea. You should have done an ordinance for enforcement. And for whatever reason, our, the, the people we paid eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars did not see it fit to put an ordinance in place for Imagine Brownsville. And if you all want to succeed, I, I hope you all will look at it and maybe reword it in the form of an ordinance, so it can be more in line with local government code two thirteen point zero zero three. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do everybody else? That's it?
Mr. Alex Resendez?
Alex Resendez. Alex Resendez.
Ladies and gentlemen, Alex Resendez, Reverend Alex Resendez. May I don't go to sleep on me?
I'm waiting for you.
Te voy a hacer un Obama, un President Obama. I apologize, ¿entiendes? Porque I don't know what happened, but you did make me kinda mad. Okay, here we go. Este, have you seen Kentucky? You guys seen the television? Sabes lo que pasó? What happened in Kentucky, huh? I, I, I hope you guys look at the television. Kentucky over there, man, is flooded, okay? Everybody's drowning over there. Bad business. I, I mean, I mean, the whole area, bien feo. Now, what's stopping it from happening aquí? Ahorita gracias a Dios. We haven't had the hurricanes, we haven't had no drowning.
We need the water, dump us in the water.
No water, no nada, ¿entiendes? Pero allá se están muriendo, allá está, I mean, los carros floating all over the place. Just watch the television, okay? What's gonna stop it from coming here, okay? Did you talk to the National Guard yet, or you ready? Okay, okay, that's it. No más por favor, let's get ready, porque we might get the same thing from over there. The, the weather is kinda, kinda crazy, ¿entiendes? With all due respect to all of you. Now, my other thing that I've been thinking about, you got two new commissioners, I cannot address to, porque aquí dice que you don't address to one, to no, no names, ¿eh? But you got two new commissioners, they look very beautiful and everything, but I would like to know, are they doing anything for the airport? Have they gone over there somewhere and tried to bring business como Lockheed? I was talking to two guys from Lockheed Aircraft about three days ago, and they said, Alex, I work for them over there in Louisiana. Alex, how is Brownsville doing, and this and that. I said, I don't, I don't know, I really don't know about the airport down here, but we used to wire airplanes aquí, we used to have a lot of work, ¿entiendes? Mr. Garza used to be in, in that position, and, and he would bring it out. I wonder if this young lady is gonna be intelligent enough to, to go all the way to Louisiana, Lake Charles over there, and talk to these guys, and, and bring Lockheed Aircraft over here, so we can have plenty of jobs? Because you all are nice ladies y todo, pero you all gonna have to present something to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y adiós, my guys.
I mean...
And I'll do like Obama, President Obama, he said something bad about the policemen. We do apologize. You apologize with me too, ¿eh?
Anybody else, City Secretary, that's it?
Mr. Bill Burke.
Mr. Who?
Bill Burke. I think he's gone.
He's gone, okay. Item fifteen, please.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to accept a tobacco compliance grant award from the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts in the amount of six, sixty-eight hundred dollars awarded to the Brownsville Police Department for fiscal year 2010.
This is a grant? I don't think anybody can say no, a grant. Can we have a motion approved?
Second.
Most approved, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner.
Item seventeen, consideration and possible action regarding a memorandum of understanding between the Brownsville, between the Brownsville Public Utilities Board and the City of Brownsville for impact fee recommend, implementation.
Mr. Sassi.
Yes, in terms of item number sixteen?
Okay, you wanna add anything to this? You, you ran this by PUP, or you, it's a green...
You talked about number seventeen.
Yes.
I'd asked of that, I'd not, number seventeen be tabled.
Move to table.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to table, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration and possible action on the new city policies and procedures regarding review of contracts by the legal department before execution by the city.
Good afternoon. Over the last month or so, we've seen some issues regarding the way the city processes its contracts. I, we've gotten together with the city manager's office, and we've come up with a policy and a procedure, providing for the legal review of all contracts. First of all, in regard to the, there's a city policy that we're gonna have, and I think we've provided you all, we should have provided you all copies of those. Basically, any documents, any contracts, ordinances, resolutions, which are subject to the approval of the city commission, will be provided to legal counsel two weeks in advance of, of the meeting, and, and will bear a stamp.
Where possible.
Well, right, the exception to that will be where the city manager and the city attorney work to, work together to waive that, that's right. But what, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get adequate legal review before, before it's presented to you for your signature. And the reason for the, for the time period is, if we need to go back to the other side and request changes or modifications, that period of time will allow us to do that. The problem is, is a general rule, sometimes people want the contract signed on a certain date, and, and then we're in a situation where we have to get it signed by a certain date, but then it's not ready to be signed. So we wanna have adequate time for the contract to be reviewed, for any changes to be made, and then for final, final legal approval. Now, if, if there's a problem with that, the city manager can waive that, just, you know, to make, to make sure we get it, get it to you in time, okay?
That's it.
There's also a, a city procedure that, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna require contracts that are going to the city manager, as opposed to you, be reviewed by legal counsel as well. We don't require any action on the, the procedure, but we just ask that the city adopt the policy that's in the packet.
Okay. Thank you, and we can always improve, and this is one of the things we're doing to improve. Any, you wanna say something?
All, all the, the policies and procedures have been submitted to the directors, and we'll wait for a few input, but basically, that's the procedure we wanna follow for now.
Is this an action item?
I have a, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Samora, you want?
Yes. This policy doesn't say that it's required, this is a required procedure.
Well, we got two, we got the policy.
I, I understand.
Neither one of them does.
You require two weeks, preferably.
Yes, there is a timeframe, but it doesn't say there's a requirement that they have to submit documents or contracts to legal.
Well, it says, actually, it says, "Review of documents will be accomplished by the staff of the city attorney's office prior to the matter being placed on the commission agenda." And then down at ED, "Evidence of review by the office of the city attorney will be shown on the document by the use of the following stamp." And there's a stamp at the bottom, and it says, "Approved as the form and legality, this blank day of blank titled Office of the City Attorney." So when documents, when ordinances, resolutions, or contracts are presented in the future to the city commission, they'll bear that stamp, and they'll have either my signature or the signature of John Chozy with the date.
Okay, now, the additional, the second policy, which requires contracts to go through the city manager, this, this second one that's attached, doesn't have a requirement that I see of, it just says, "Shall initiate a request." Not only that, there's no cap. So if it's a three hundred dollar contract, they can send it to you, or are we going to require, if it's at least five thousand, they have to send it to legal? I mean, I think that's pretty much what got us in a pickle before.
The procedure, okay, the policy is something that's enacted by the city commission. The reason that the policy enacted by the city commission is, is broader than the procedure is because I don't wanna have to come back and change this every time we, we wanna make a small change to make things work, okay? The, the policies that are being presented to the city commission for contract review are on the policy. And basically, what that says is, anytime a, a contract, or a resolution, or an ordinance goes before the city commission, it will be presented to the city attorney and bear that stamp for your review, all right? Now, there's a, there's also a more detailed procedure dealing with documents that are, any contracts that are presented to the city manager for the city manager's approval. Basically, the, the, the procedure for that will be, the originating department will present it to the legal, legal department will either approve it or give it back with appropriate changes. It'll then come back for our final review, and then it'll receive the, it'll, it'll receive the signature of the other opposing party before being submitted to the city manager.
But are they required to do that?
Yes.
They will be?
Yes.
So you'll be flooded with contracts from a hundred dollars to five thousand dollars? I mean, do you have the staff to review all those contracts?
There's a lot of purchasing that goes on that's not in the form of a contract. We've got the purchasing cards, we've got regular purchasing. I'm talking about contractual obligations that are in the form of a written contract. And yes, I think we do. If, if, if it becomes onerous, that's why we have a procedure that will make changes in, if it becomes, if it becomes some, but I'm not asking for approval on the procedure.
Let's try.
I'm asking for procedure approval on the policy.
Let's try, and if we need to tweak with it, and he finds that he can't handle it.
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to just make sure legal reviews contracts and protects the city rights.
We're trying to avoid the same problem, the mistake we've made in the past, that's what you're trying to say, okay?
Right, it's gonna keep the, the city attorney busy.
That's good, that's what we're paying for.
Just like the rest of us.
Earn your keep. Okay, this is an action item, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Trani. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo, I mean, Samora. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Second was by Commissioner Samora. All right, next item?
Item nineteen, discussion and possible action on, on actions by the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation to promote economic development.
May I move to table this indefinitely?
Okay, we have a motion to table at the request of Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty.
Item twenty, consideration in action to acknowledge the Cameron Appraisal District Chief Appraiser's certification of the City of Brownsville's two thousand and nine tax roll.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, there was an adjustment at the very last minute by the appraisal district, and I'll go ahead and read out the, the appraised, certified appraised roll is five billion, three hundred and sixty-nine million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three ninety-one. And all, all we ask is for you to acknowledge that number, that has been certified by the chief appraiser.
This is an action item.
Mayor, I move to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion to acknowledge by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item number twenty-one, consideration in action to acknowledge the Chief Financial Officer's certification of the estimated out-of-alarm tax collection rate for tax year two thousand and nine, and the excess debt tax collections for tax year twenty, two thousand and eight.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission certify that we will have a hundred percent collections for the debt service, for the company year, and we will not have, we will have a zero excess, and that's just an acknowledgement.
Okay, this is an action item. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gowen. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item twenty-two, consideration in action to acknowledge the Chief Financial Officer's calculation of the city's effective and rollback out-of-alarm tax rates for tax year two thousand and nine and fiscal year two thousand and ten.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, again, there were last-minute changes made by the appraisal district, so the information you have in your packet is not correct, so I'm gonna pass out the, the correct information.
This is an action item. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, acknowledge by Commissioner Atkinson. Can I, can I have a second?
Aye.
We have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Last item?
Item twenty-three, consideration in action on the creation of an office of tourism in the City of Brownsville.
Thanks, sir.
Beginning in fiscal year two thousand and nine through two thousand and ten.
I think to proceed with this, we need to proceed cautiously, we need to look at our options, and what's the alternative. I asked the city manager to get some information from McAllen, as we see how they do it. He got some information, but it was very limited.
Yes, sir.
I like to get their bylaws, I like to look at more how they have it structured. I provided a handout for you all to look at, and maybe we can, before we meet next time, or in two weeks, each of us go out and do some little research, and see what we wanna do, if we wanna do anything. So based on that, if Commissioner...
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Sure.
I just have one quick question. I, you know, I know going on the agenda, we didn't have anything other than the standard, you know, agenda request, but, you know, some of this information would be good to just kinda look at it ourselves. What exactly are we looking at? You know, we wanted to create this tourism office, but there was zero information in the packet, and it's kinda hard to say, well, you know, what do we do? You know, what's this about? So I really would appreciate if, if there's an item on the agenda, that there is some, you know, backup material, so at least we can have something to look at and, and think about this.
That's why we bring it to the, to the, to the commissioner's attention to discuss, and now we have discussed it, and some feel that there needs to be more transparency, more accountability, better marketing of the city, less use of funds for administration, and also look at what the options are out there, the alternatives. It could be under the chamber, or whatever, or leave it as it is. Some people feel like there's, based on what I've been hearing, okay, there's not enough representation from the entertainment industry, the hotel industry, would you concur? So based on those discussions we've had, that was the purpose of bringing it here. Now, you may feel like there's nothing, there's no problem, there's no need to do anything.
No, there's still, there's changes that need to be made, you know, but for example, there's a packet, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. The, the idea is that we know there's, there's some problems there, we had to bail them out last time, forgive some debt, and I think we need to at least look at it and see if we wanna do something or not. And I think a good way to start is get information, like I said, from McAllen, see how they have it done, and go from there.
My only concern, Mayor, is, you know, we get a packet of information that talks about one company that can provide services. That's great, but, I mean, that's not the way we do business, you know? Well, let's just look at this one company if, that's what we're gonna do. And so that, you know, that raises a lot of questions in my mind, I think it does for, for, for the rest of the commission.
The door's open.
But that's an issue. That's an issue for me.
Well, I didn't have anything in my packet either when I had to make a multimillion-dollar decision on a tax contract. But, I mean, just making a point.
Yeah, very good point.
Well, I won't get into that one, and, you know, thank you.
Very good point.
But I would like, I do have a...
I'll second that.
Wait, wait a second, one at a time. Commissioner Samora?
I was told, almost immediately after putting the item on the agenda, I was advised to table it. So it was a bit too late, and I didn't add any information in the packet because we're hoping to bring Scott Jozlov down, an outside perspective, to provide insight on the creation of this department. Not only that, but the proper use of hotel motel funds, which goes hand in hand with the workshop we heard earlier today.
Well, this was for, exactly, a workshop to discuss, to see what we wanted to do. It's not a do or die thing, there's nothing we have to act on it right now. But, you know, all we wanna do is make it better. That's what, that's what we ought to do. And if there's consensus to, to move one direction, good, if there's not, that's still good. Let's work together to do what's best for Brownsville. So can I have a motion to table this?
I would move to table.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Longoria makes a motion to table, second by Commissioner Gowen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we'll table it the next meeting, or two weeks, is that right? Move to adjourn.
Mayor, I would like to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Very good meeting. Charlie, I think I left my, my glass case in the...
Would you guys please get a digital equalizer for that guy?